I would like to advise those present that the notice of the regular meeting of the housing authority of the city of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular monthly meeting of Thursday, September 14th, 2023 was given by publication of the annual meeting notice of the authority with amendments as necessary and was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Letter on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, as notification to the general public of said meeting and sent to the City Clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. With a copy of the address to be posted on the Volten Board in City Hall, Hoboken Library, and Hoboken Police Department, and posted on the authority website on Tuesday, September 5th, 2023. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act.
Sure, Anthony Forbes.
Thanks.
Andrew Infostato.
Present.
Aaron Lewitt.
Here.
Barbara Rass.
Here.
Michael Russo. James Sanford. Erica Seitzman.
Present.
We have public portion, um, Jeanette Lopez. You can come up to them. You have five minutes. I just ask you guys to be respectful. I also am asking anyone, if you need to have a conversation, please stand out in the hallway. If you have phones, please put them on vibrate. Thank you.
My name is Jeanette Lopez, 224 Harrison, 5A. I come to me because I just got a letter today because I spoke to two in the meeting last week and they told me if I don't get rid of my daughter, she don't got an apartment, I gotta get out. I got the letter right here today. If I don't, if I don't kick out my daughter, she don't have a place to live. I'm not leaving my grandkid home in the street. I'm not gonna drive around. So if they want me, they want to do something, give her a permit. She don't got no way to live. She got two kids. I'm not leaving her in the street and I got the letter right here. They sent me to, they gave it to me today. If I don't do it, I have to get rid of my daughter or get out. So I'm not getting out and I'm not leaving my daughter in the street. I'm fighting for my daughter and the rights. I'm not leaving my daughters, my grandkid in the street, two babies. They never with me. They go to school, they order their father, come every two each home. They never home with me, so I'm not putting them in the street. I'm not. Those are my babies. You know? And my babies, I'm not doing it. I'm not. So I'm just standing here, I got the letter right here. If I'm, I'm abandoning my lease. How can I be abandoning my lease when I told them to stay with me? I'm not doing that to you. I spoke to two. And I got a letter saying I gotta get out. It's not right.
Why don't you come and see us tomorrow?
Okay, if I go, I wanna get to push lines again or somebody's gonna talk to me as personally.
Sorry, I don't understand.
If I go to speak to you for another day, will I get taken care of or it's gonna be the same thing again?
Well, I'll try our best. I can't answer you until.
Okay, I'm just letting you know. I'm not leaving my daughter. I'm sorry about that.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Good afternoon. Alta Gracia. I live at 222 Harrison Street Apartment 1A. Okay, it's been constant times I have called. I have mold in my bathroom. I got pictures. It's disgusting. Okay, I live with my daughter. I suffer from asthma, her too. I would like to know what's going on. What's going on? It's always an excuse. You know what? There's not enough workers. You know what? It's tomorrow, it's tomorrow. No, it has to be done. I suffer from asthma. It's no good. Constantly timed. I'm tired. I'm tired. What do I gotta do? Do I have to do it?
Sammy, come out and see you tomorrow?
Look. It's nasty. I got anxiety and I'm not a nasty person. Anybody that knows me, I'm a clean person. I've been living there for 16 years and if you come to my apartment, it's clean. And everybody says, wow, it's clean. Yes, I am. And that's my bathtub. As much as you clean. My thing is, right? Okay, as much as you paint over it, it's gonna come out. It's, it's gonna come out no matter what. Okay, so thank you. Oh, that's a Patterson. Patterson with two feet. I live at 222 Harrison Street Apartment 2A. Right over same building she live in. Y'all moved this lady in the building. She's threatening the building to burn it down. What must we do? She could tell you, we threaten of that lady and we scared and she always start trouble with us and it's enough, it's enough. I've been living in that building over 20 years and she been living there too. And my tub filthy too. But you need to do something with that tenant in that building, Bob. You know, I spoke to you about her too, right? Yeah, but you'll need to do something with her, Mr. Recko. I mean, we're, we're quiet people. We don't have problems in the project. We've been living a rent up here. We don't need outsiders coming in here threatening us because if you don't do something with her, it's gonna be a problem. You're gonna be a problem. I have a big family and I'm tired. My sister wanna come down here, hurt that lady and I don't want that. I don't want that. Call her to the office, bring all of the tenants in the building to the office and we'll tell you. Enough is enough, Mr. Recko. You gotta do something, okay? Please. Because I'm 68 years old and I'm telling you, I will hurt somebody. Okay? And Jeannie know me, y'all know me, I will hurt somebody. Do something with that lady because she's from Jersey City and whatever happened to her in Jersey, that's a problem. Don't bring it to Hoboken because we not having it. Okay? Thank you.
We do a criminal background check. We do a criminal background check on everyone.
See.
And if they come back, please.
I'm sorry, I'm just having, go ahead.
If they come out clean, have a criminal background check. And there's no significant credit issues, then they're allowed in.
We, we don't call the former landlord?
We found that to be pretty useless over time. Because they won't tell us anything in this legal order. And then again, it takes a while to, that we are aware of that and we are.
Is it new tenant?
Yes, we are taking action. But again, it takes a while.
Is this a new tenant?
Like Barbara said, we had a run-in with her earlier in the week.
Joseph Gonzalez?
What does he? Who does he? Good soul, who does he?
Yes, those.
Thank you. Just, just to direct it to me, to me, Cher. Just ask.
What you say is he wants her to speak for him because he feels more comfortable.
Muchas gracias. I just need your name speaking.
Muy buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Anaí. El señor González es la persona muy importante en mi vida.
Okay.
Usted habla en inglés.
No.
She doesn't speak English, so we might have to translate. I don't have a problem.
Buenas noches nuevamente a todos. Señor Greco, buenas noches a la señora Jeanne, a la señora Paula, señora Orca.
Now let him, now let him just translate that.
Appreciamos mucho todo lo que hacen por la comunidad, pero esta noche el señor González es por años de ser inquilino de ustedes.
So she's first of all thanking us for the many years that, that he's been our tenant and she's been very grateful for that, but.
Y de la misma manera, al ser el novidente, que todos sabemos, él ha solicitado que por favor por años se le ayude con su baño porque él se tropieza y ha tenido muchos accidentes frecuentes.
So based on his, he has a disability vision that he's been requesting help with his bathroom and.
Sí, por favor, ya lo hemos hecho y si esta noche venimos, sí a tener gratitud, pero a la manera también de expresarles la ayuda porque es necesario para él porque se ha golpeado. Él tiene sus piernas cicatrizadas y con mucho corte.
Y eso es de ahí?
Sí, por eso, por la tina, por lo que él no mira.
Okay, so she's saying that, that he's got many scars on his legs from trying to get in the tub and not being able to see him hitting it. So is it? Also, what she's talking about is retrofitting. If we can retrofit the bathroom to be a handicap.
Por años, sí. Por años hemos solicitado a mi Patricia, pero lamentablemente ella por ahora no está. Entonces, mister Greco, por favor ayúdenos. En especial yo le pido.
¿Cuál es el apartamento?
El cuatro O. Cuatro O.
Four O.
I just can't hear you saying.
I'm sorry. We will, we will have to come in and actually make sure the hygiene system would be adjustable so that we can put that retrofitting. But I will look into that first thing tomorrow.
So the management and maintenance goes in tomorrow?
Yes.
El día que desee, las puertas del hogar están abiertas. Quiero agradecer, mister Greco, por usted dirigir también todas estas unidades comunitarias. Y quiero a, a mi Jeannie también porque nos protege y siempre está pendiente de nosotros.
She wants to thank you for the great job you're doing on all the units and also Ms. Jeannie for taking over.
Gracias, gracias por cuidarnos.
Do you have, do you have the unit? Yes, we know where it's located.
Sí. Y se me olvidó comentar que hay mojo en el baño y se cae. Le ponen algo, pero a los seis meses vuelve y cae. Y el doctor, perdón, el doctor le dijo que eso era peligroso para él, por su unidad.
So she's also saying that there's mold in the bathroom. It does get fixed, but it comes back and then it falls and we fix it and it comes back, so.
Gracias. Paz. Gracias, buenas noches y que cada jornada laboral sea bendecida para todos.
She's blessing everyone.
Y gracias vecinos. Muchas gracias.
Mister Greco, thank you so much because I come from a waking in my mind and not said to speak today. And I thank you so much for hearing her, which are my words. And God bless each and everyone. Mister Frank, thank you so much for translating. We'll see you tomorrow.
May I just have your name? I'm sorry.
Es Anaí. A-A-N-A-I. A-A-H-Y. Nina. N-N-I-N-A. Thank you. Lo propio. Gracias por escucharnos. Ramon Perez?
Muy buenas noches a todos. Yo tengo un problema.
Ramon quiere que decir su nombre en el apartamento en el microfono.
Ramon Perez.
His name is Ramon Perez. I think he doesn't speak English.
Uno H.
Uno H?
Sí.
One H.
Yo tengo un problema. Allá tengo ya seis meses. Yo quiero que me fundí en el apartamento entero completo. Porque hay un pájaro que anda el día entero, la noche cambia. De día, de noche se salen y de día salen, de día salen y de noche se encadenan. Entonces ya tengo seis meses con eso, okay? Hoy vino un pernero de trentos. Tuve que atenderlo aquí, okay? Mañana viene otro pernero y me van a operar. Que así que voy a tener una, una pernera que además atende ahí. Tengo la hoja Mike.
So he's having issues with bedbugs in his apartment. It's been on and off for about six months. He's talking about today, one of the caseworkers came and because everyone, you know, they're aware of his issue, they won't even see him in his apartment. So he had to see them down here today. But that he's talking about he's about to go for surgery and, you know, I guess the point that he's about to get to is, you know, can we go in there when he's out? But he hasn't gotten to that. I think that's where he's going.
Entonces, ya llevo seis meses. Cada que el tipo viene, lo que hace que un ching, entonces no quiere fundigar el apartamento entero. Okay, le dije que en el piso porque arriba no hay nada. Que en el piso que está completo entero. Entonces eso de noche no me deja dormir. Yo anoche me desperté a las cuatro. Todos los días apienzo a las tres y a las cuatro, además dormimos dos horas en la noche.
So it's affecting his sleep now. He's, he says when he goes to sleep, he wakes up with it, but it is, we understand what it is, so we.
He also stated that the exterminator goes in, he's not doing the entire apartment. Is that?
No, they usually do the entire apartment. I don't know why that would be.
Tienen que hacerlo completo, no quieren.
He's stating that that's not what's happening.
I think, I think what we gotta get to is the point for bedbug treatment. There's like a whole thing that has to happen in the unit that whether it's himself or, I don't know in the particular case, but I will get involved. There's a lot that needs to happen. It's not just the spraying and I hope, and I know that we've been, this is gonna be a recurring issue with some folks. Yeah, so this is a particular case. We have a few people that are on the hop that we treat it, we stop it, they get on the hop, it comes back. So we have about four or five people on this bus and we're working with the city because I think at some point we're gonna have to treat the bus. So, but we have been in and out of his unit, but we need to get to the point is, you know, that's what we were talking about. Sometimes the treatment has to be extremely aggressive where you have to take everything out, everything has to go to the washer and dryer. Let me ask him if he's gotten to this treatment. He is, he says that actually his procedure right now, he actually has his clothes and bags and that when he is gonna wear something, he brings it to the laundry room and he heats it up or irons it before he wears it. So we will, we will work with him. I know that, I know that this is a problem that we actually have, that, you know, we gotta, we gotta get to the bottom of it.
We will work with him. We, we know how to get rid of bedbugs. We get rid of many, that goes to many apartments. So we'll continue to work with him.
You're talking about the hop the bus, right?
Yes, yes.
And the city owner.
Yeah.
So we might have to involve.
Yeah, we'll have to work together because I know that a lot of folks that rely on that, you know, they're going there, they're treating and because we have them in different buildings, we've now experienced it and we've kind of now pinpointed to that. So unfortunately, they are passing it to each other. And, you know, it's, it's gonna be one of those things. I, I'm hoping that maybe we can do something with like the dog, like there's a dog that you can bring out and kind of like do a, a little sweep or something. So we're, we're at that point. I know that there's a few that we know that we've pinpointed and it's kind of a small resurgence that we see right now.
Should you ask him how many times he's complained about this?
Seis, seis meses. Seis meses.
So, no, for six months he's been complaining? Like to, to.
Yo, la última vez ya no, ya no ni la puedo contar. Yo fui y se lo dije, ya no, ¿verdad? Hasta la prueba la llevé, ¿verdad? Hoy al tiempo le di la prueba. Okay, yo le dije, yo necesito que no venga conmigo el apartamento entero completo porque no es arriba, es por abajo. Entonces el uno viene en el pernero del trento. Yo hoy vino uno y yo tuve que atenderlo ahí afuera, ahí, en la mesa de abajo, pues no subió arriba.
He said he's complained many times and over the period of time, we've probably gotten in there many, many times. But this is something that we're gonna have to get to the point sometimes we've gotta extract everything and then.
But we have responded.
Yes. I, I'm, we can probably pull that up.
We've responded. The issue is also we can't, the chemical that's used to attack bedbugs, it can't be around here.
The full source, like the cabinets, the pantries.
So those are the places that they're not spraying the bedbugs. They'll go into bedrooms, where the cabinets you're at, his dressers. Can we get him to another unit?
And, and what we first have to do is he would have to be okay with kind of leaving everything behind. Because if we just takes it, he just takes it with him. And then he goes, and actually we just did this in another building. We gave the apartment and it was a hop individual and now the new apartment has it. We cleared in the old apartment and now here we are again. So we will have to work along with Danny, along with, you know, Chrissy. Yeah, social services, yeah. And that's actually who keeps calling us about the hop. And that's how we kind of like tied it in together to social services in the city.
Mira, hoy vinieron, ¿no verdad? Por el tiempo, yo le dije que había que fundigar el entero el apartamento y no quiso.
So today was a treatment.
Van como seis y siete veces, ya lo digo, que porque andan es mucho, porque son par, par de millones. Entonces anda por el piso. Entonces eso de noche, el único pájaro que se sube, se sube la cama es ese, a la cabecera. Entonces eso hay que, automáticamente lo todo ya, hay que lavarla con.
We'll work with Oscar tomorrow. No, no, it's the same. We're still talking about, you know, what he was saying to the, to the exterminator about how they walk and he keeps telling them to do the floor. It's the same exact thing. But, yes, so I will work with Oscar tomorrow to find out what's the treatments that we've had so far. And we are, we are at the point that we do have to do something extra above and beyond.
Can we also make sure that it's just, if he's saying it's just bedbugs, but is there something else? Like maybe we can explain that it's not bedbugs, you know, just a regular extermination as well?
He said that he's lost about $2,000 in throwing out clothes and he bought another bed.
Come back the next time. Good evening, everybody. My name is Juana McCall. And Juana, J-U-A-N-A, McCall, M-C-C-A-L-L. And I live 220 Adams Apartment 9-0. I moved in here last year in October and since I've been moved in this, this building, this, this is a young lady that cleans here, her name is Jeannie or Jenny, whatever. She cleans this building every day since I've been moved in this, in this building. I never had a problem with the cleaning or falling, anything to that nature. On Octo, I mean, on, on September 8th, I came out the elevator, the second elevator, and I don't know what was on the floor. At this time, she's, she was on vacation. When I came out the elevator, before that, the elevator was already dirty. Before that, that was the day before. The next day was the 8th. I came out, I came out at six something in the morning to leave out and it was something slippery or wet on the floor and I went down. To where I got pictures and everything of the elevator being dirty when she went on vacation. There was three young ladies that was supposed to have been working this building while she was on vacation. And the building was nasty. The elevator was nasty. The laundry room was nasty. You can ask this young lady right here. Jeannie cleans here every day she comes to work. Je, Jeannie. She cleans here every day when she comes to work without fail. She cleans the walls, she cleans the weather. If she gotta clean on her knees, she'll do it. These three young ladies did nothing when she went on vacation. Okay? The elevator was filthy. The floor, my floor, on the ninth floor was with doodle in front of my door. A lump of doodle in front of my door. The, the garbage room was filthy. What they did, I don't know. But when Jeannie came back, Jenny, whatever her name is, when she came back, she remarkably cleaned this building again. And I haven't had a problem with it since she got back. I don't know what they did. I got pictures here and I got the incident right here that shows when I fell on my knee. I already have problems with my legs. So when I fell there, it wasn't funny. I've been in pain ever since. And to people to be, what I've heard, I don't know how to with it. But they say that she don't clean. I, since I've been here, she cleaned this building every day that she works. And I haven't had a problem with that until these girls came and didn't do nothing and I wind up falling. So I just wanna say thank you and have a blessed evening. That's all I got to say. I don't speak English.
Buenas noches a todos.
Can I just have your name?
Silvia González.
Is it Cynthia?
González with a Z?
Two Z's?
Yeah. El problema que yo tengo es que mi vecino tiene muchas cosas. Tiene un zafacón en el balcón. Se me están entrando cucarachas. He's tenido que, que botar cosas porque me dio los insectos, esto es, chinche. Yo he fumigado mi casa completa, viró la, la, todo lo que, todo lo que tengo.
So, yeah, so she's talking about that she's having a problem with her next door neighbor that, that he has a lot of things on the balcony and it's bringing insects into her apartment that she's seen some roaches and now maybe even some bedbugs as well.
Y los insectos que el señor dice también me han subido, pero que yo con un spray que compro los fumigos todos los días.
So she said that she has self-treated every day.
Y yo tengo las fotos de, del balcón. Si lo quieren, se los muestro. Yo quiero que solamente, aunque me limpien el balcón, yo estoy conforme. Pero esto queda en el mismo balcón mío.
Right? Yeah, no. We have this. Y señor, usted habló conmigo al final del meeting y ya nosotros tenemos una puerta abierta al apartamento. Yeah, yes, no, no. So she's, I'm just explaining to her, we had a meeting this week and we sat together.
Guys, I'm gonna ask you, if you have a phone, please put it on vibrate or step outside. Si tienen un teléfono, por favor póngalo en vibración o salganse para fuera para contestarlo.
Yo también quiero darle las gracias a Jeannie, a Orca.
So when, when I was explaining to her, after she, she showed the picture, I. So she's thanking Jeannie, Paula, well, Olga, yes, for all the help that they gave her and obviously all the help that we gave her as well, so she's grateful.
Can you ask her, is this the first time she's complained about it?
¿Esta es la primera vez que usted ha dicho, ha quejado de eso?
Sí.
Esto es la pasada.
La, la primera, ah, la primera vez fue hace como un, como un mes que yo hablé con el señor.
He said about a month ago she spoke with you.
I don't know that, yeah.
Okay. Yo quiero que lo se acuerden bien para que...
No, 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 yo tengo una ponete más.
Okay. Okay, muchas gracias, que pasen buenas noches.
Anyone else?
Sandra Smith.
Want me to translate the Spanish? No. My name is Sandra Smith, I live at 221 Jackson Street, apartment 2G. My concern is the same thing with housekeeping. That elevator, like I said, I brought it attention with Ms., with Frank and Ms. Greco about the elevator. We have to pull that rubber towel inside the elevator. People have trip on that thing, it's like a bubble. And she's not here tonight, but Marjorie B R, when she got in...
I'm sorry, who was it, Marjorie?
Marjorie B R. When she got in the elevator, she went straight to and hit her, hit the wall in the elevator. And it's not only her, it's quite a few other residents in there. And many a times when I had went in, I did the same thing, thank God, you know, I'm walking now and I don't need the walker or the cane. But the idea is that it needs to be cleaned and we have dogs that is in there, they come in the elevator, they pee or wet or whatever and they don't clean it up. So when residents come in there that are handicapped walkers and canes, they're gonna slip and fall. And this is another thing, that's one issue. The other one is that I asked to see if we can have a meeting with the commissioners and with the police department. We talked to Mr. Greco.
With the rab board.
With the rab board and we would like to meet. And I brought another thing, we brought attention with, um, Mr. Greco, cause I call him Friday and Saturday, the security wasn't there. At all. When I came home from church, nobody wasn't there. So I brought it to his attention because like you said, he paying and they're not there and they're not reporting, they're saying that somebody is out or anything. So this is money coming out of the budget. So, and another thing too, the cleaning, same thing. And 221 Jackson. Um, the floors are not being cleaned. Like I said, when I have my physical therapy that comes in and walk with me, the floors are dirty. And we have these little black nets, soon as you open the door, they come flying in your house. So what I do, I just mop in front of my door, cause I can't mop the whole way, cause somebody's slipping, fall, I'll be accountable for it. So I just do my spot and spray. But the idea is like the window is broke, we had asked for to fix it so we can open the window, but you need a screen. They don't have no screens for it, so maybe you can get like a piece of screen or something to put it or tack it to it so we can open it and get some fresh air. Cause sometimes summertime, it's been hot. I wasn't able to come out because I had a kidney transplant, so I was in the house for three months. Now I'm out, so now I'm bringing it to you, we need to do something with it. If not, then we will raise some money and we will have it done in this building. Cause I know y'all on the budget and right now we need, we are seniors in there, so we want the same treatment as anything else. One thing I gotta say, the housekeeper, we had a beautiful lady that was keeping our building, I know y'all change it around, but we need her back because she kept that community room. Same thing with this lady, said it was clean. She mopped the floor and some fear for her to take the garbage out because people, like I said, Deborah puts a sign in, uh, compact. They put bags in there, they put furnitures in there. Many a times I had sent pictures to Ms. Greco, I think Frank, you gotta see it, I had even put a letter there in red letters telling them, take the stuff outside in the back. Cause when you go in there, them bugs and I don't know what it was in that, in there. I went in there, I had ran out and got a can of spray and start spraying all over in there because I couldn't put the garbage down to shoot, cause it was so much bugs or I don't know what it was. I just said I was scared about bedbugs, so I just sprayed all inside there. But right now, the tenants, they don't care. So they just leave it there, I don't know what to say, how to solve it, but maybe y'all come up with some ideas to do it or the maintenance to come up and do something. But it, it's really bad. Every day, that housekeeper, she's pulling out a lot of stuff. Bags, I mean, boxes, I mean, you have to see, some of them put trays of food on top of the black thing, you had to see it, not covered. And they just left it there. That's roaches, that's, that's stuff coming cuminating. And it's, it's sad. So I'm just bringing to your attention, steady getting better is getting worse. And also that little vent in the bathroom, we don't have circulations in the bathroom. So the walls are bubbling up and it's peeling. So I don't, I don't know what to say. You know, you take a shower, you have to leave the door open to crack, but it's like really, now that I see what the resident's talking about, it's like bubbling up, it's cracking, like there's one appeal. So come up with a solution, if you're willing to come to apartment, you could come to my apartment and see. Thank you, have a blessed evening.
Thank you.
So, come up with options. Um, so what I'm frustrated and confused about is, I don't think, is, it doesn't seem like there's a really smooth process where if a resident has an issue, to submit it or to get your attention and then track it and, and make sure that the progress and the complaint is fully satisfied. They shouldn't have to like take their time and come to a meeting when the, when the meeting is in their building, so that's like once every couple of months, to let their voice be heard, right? I mean, there should, it should be like a, I don't, I don't know what the answer is.
We would agree. You know, we have thousands of work orders, hundreds, hundreds of work orders. And our guys do work orders, guys and ladies do work orders all the time and we satisfy hundreds of work orders. And somebody may come and say one or two or three, but of the hundreds that are done, there's very few that don't get done and or follow up on. I understand, for example, that maybe she liked the cleaning lady that was there before.
Yeah.
But sometimes somebody's got to be moved and another cleaning person comes in. Now, I haven't heard in our, in our meetings together, that has been terrible. I haven't heard that. In our meetings together, I haven't heard that the elevator floor is a tripping hazard. I haven't heard that.
Alright.
And I don't know if that's been reported in maintenance, I got my maintenance folks here.
We were talking about a dis- he was talking about the epoxy on the floor.
Was he found it? This elevator has a tripping hazard, huh?
No, 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 they were complaining.
No, this tripping hazard, this elevator has a tripping hazard.
This elevator was...
Not here, not here.
Oh, you're talking, yes, that's...
So 221 has a tripping hazard.
Yeah, I saw it this, this afternoon, you know, I was...
I'm just, I'm sorry, I can't...
So, I'm sorry. As soon as he saw it today, he had his guy repair it.
No, I, I get that, what I'm more concerned about is like the mold in the units, I know is, is a huge, especially with people that have asthma.
So the one lady that was complaining about that, Sammy has just met with her, right?
Right, yes.
Come on Sammy and say it.
I spoke, uh, lady, she's actually sitting there, I scheduled for her for eight days tomorrow morning. We're gonna go in.
No, no, that, that's, but that's now, it's, she had to come to the meeting.
No, she didn't, he had already talked to her.
This is private.
Yes, I spoke to her.
So she felt the need to come even though you scared her.
She wanted to come and...
Voice her opinion or frustration.
Voice her opinion or her opinion of frustration.
As, as, as I would.
I got, I got you both talking at the same time.
But we also have a thousand, three hundred of the units that were...
No, I, I, look, I get, your, your job is really tough. My, my thing is...
I got you both talking at the same time.
My whole thing is the process, like I know each building has a manager, right?
Right.
So I would think the manager's job is to prioritize these issues.
It would be.
A gentleman that can't sleep at night because of bedbugs, that's a high priority, I would think.
That's right, it is.
Seems like that's like months of...
And, and bedbugs often take months. If the tenant is not doing their part, and I'm not saying he isn't.
Yeah.
But even in a good situation where everyone's doing everything, bedbugs can take one to two months with multitude of treatments. Now, if there's for some reason, a tenant that gets treated, then they go out and they pick up some more somehow, and they come back, they go to the theater, pick up some more bedbugs, you come back, you start all over again, right? So we start all over again, at no cost to the resident. And some people have particularly joined the hop, we have found, are bringing bedbugs into our apartments. So we're constantly fighting. When he complained, we were out there right away, but sometimes it takes four to six months, particularly if somebody's bringing somebody back in or maybe they didn't throw out the right mattress and it was still in, you know?
So have we, have we talked to the city about the hop? Have we had a conversation with the city of Hoboken and the hop?
I believe Frank has been talking about it, cause you already knew the issue.
Yeah, so the conversation, how it came to me, they're starting to refuse.
I'm just trying to get your opinion, Frank.
Yeah. They're frustrated like we are, so we wanna come, we've, we've now found this common thread there, we wanna identify it.
So the hop should be shut, like shut down until...
Treated, you know, treated, the same way that...
But it's still running as of today.
Hmm.
So like you see...
And this is, and this is in, uh...
So we treat the bedbugs, we've identified that the hop is tracking it back.
Well, the thing is, you can't, you can't say this, the hop, we don't know that, we don't know that.
It might be.
Right, it could be, it could be, it's just a coincidence that folks that are sharing the hop, it's happened. But yeah, like it, it's true, like the hop could be like maybe they're using one, I don't know what their fleet is, one day it could be one bus, it could be another, we don't really know. It's just that it's something that came to our attention. It would be nice if we can get to the point that maybe a combined effort, the housing authority and everybody, cause this is a shit, the hop is by the city, by everyone in the city, is to, to have maybe the, the bus treatment, like if that should be something that we can certainly, um, initiate that conversation with them, but, um...
But see, you can't pinpoint, you can't pinpoint that. I'm not getting, like sitting here, I'm not getting, I'm getting these residents like come, they have to come down from their homes, go to the microphone, I don't know, in the back of my head, I'm thinking, in order to do that, there must be a prob, like a serious problem that I'm not being heard. So I, alright, I'm not being heard, problem keeps going on, I now have to go to a meeting and be heard so that I get the problem fixed. Like for commissioners, I, I think we can all agree, like that stems from the problem going on. Like there's some gentleman that's falling and has bruises on his leg from, like that's an easy fix, like we gotta get him a handicap, top. Like he, he shouldn't have, he shouldn't have to come here with, and, you see what I'm saying?
Sure. But again, I would have to look and see when that was reported, what we've done on it so far. We meet with our managers once a week, for example.
Okay.
And I have managers that come to that meeting once a week and say, do you know there's a guy up here that's got this issue, we need to handicap or retrofit this unit?
So that happened?
No, it didn't.
Well, that's my, so where are we?
I didn't hear anything. So the question is, the question is...
They meet with the manager, right? So if the manager didn't report it to them, they would have no idea.
Or if the manager didn't know. I, I mean, I, I don't know.
I know, that's my...
Because I have many managers that come to me.
I got you both talking at the same time.
We, we're having, we need a clear process where like...
We have one.
Okay.
But see, did that resident come to the manager?
So it seems like they, they're, that's why they ask all the times, is this the first time?
No, no, so if, if I could, I think that we, it's a good thing that we have this avenue here and we also have our main office that people come into every day. Louis can tell you, people come in every day, even though there's the manager's offices, they go over the managers and then all of a sudden, the commissioners get a call about a work order, right? But they haven't even called it in yet. So a lot of times, my phone rings at ten o'clock at night, but, oh, did you call it in? Oh, no, not yet, but I'm calling you, right? So that's not, that's not what I'm saying. We do have many avenues for people to come to us, including the open forums once a month. And that's why it, it shouldn't come to that, I one hundred percent agree. And I can give you some offline details of particulars of some of tonight's things that would shed some light on some of the conversations we're having that are not for public, you know, but, um...
So do we, do we track, like for the example of the bedbugs, gentlemen?
Yes.
Do you have the ability to go now and say, okay, on, um...
Yes.
September first, we went into his apartment, we sprayed. September sixth, he contacted us again. Do you have a whole log of that? Like I think that would be useful to, to see.
Absolutely.
We could see that. If you can maybe send that out tomorrow, just to give us an example.
Soon as the work order comes in, Jack, you have talked about a work order process? Sure.
While Jack, while Jackie's coming.
Good evening, everyone. So when the calls come in, um, normally we get them from the managers. So the process is, every tenant will go to the manager's office, we get an email. If it's an emergency, we actually make that priority. With exterminations, it's always an emergency. Oscar, who is in maintenance, you know Oscar, well, he'll keep track of all the exterminations, especially with the specials with bedbugs. Um, I actually was trying to contact Oscar, which I did. Um, the gentleman that was talking about the bedbugs, he doesn't have bedbugs. We've been treating his apartment, he does have roaches and there's other issues in his apartment that the managers have been involved.
Okay.
Okay.
Is mold a emergency?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Is the, I'm pretty sure the lady said it was six months, you found out?
It's, um, I'm here.
So, oh, yes. How long have you had, am I, am I allowed to go last bit?
Yeah.
How long have you had the mold?
Forever. Let's say that.
So, I, I know that... See, that, like that's really frustrating to hear, right? I know you're frustrated as well.
Yes, we, we get many calls.
If that's an emergency.
Yes, it is.
And the manager was alerted about it, that should be like, let's visit, meet him, right?
Yeah, there's a process, I mean, normally we do handle all the emergencies first. We do have, um, a list that we actually work from, so that way, I mean, we're not gonna get to every work order. It's true what Mr. Greco said, we have many work orders. I mean, we work with every inspection, even with the, whatever the inspector found, we're still working on those work orders, on top of the work orders that we get on a daily. Um, we're talking about even after hours. So, um, yes, it's a challenge, but we try our best to actually get to most of them
See, that, like that's really frustrating to hear, right? I know you're frustrated as well.
Yes, we, we get many calls.
If that's an emergency.
Yes, it is.
And the manager was alerted about it, that should be like, let's visit immediately, right?
Yeah, there's a process, I mean, normally, we do handle all the emergencies first. We do have um, a list that we actually work from, so that way, I mean, we're not going to get to every work order. It's true what Mr. Recko said, we have many work orders. I mean, we work with every inspection, even with the, whatever the inspector found, we're still working on those work orders. On top of the work orders that we get on a daily. Um, we're talking about even after hours. So um, yes, it's a challenge, but we try our best to actually get to most of them and, I mean, maybe one will slip through the cracks, but um, we do actually handle many, many units.
And I would like us to be able to go back to her unit and look at when the first call came in.
Yeah, and we can do that.
Because I don't know of mold calls that come in that we don't go to immediately.
So could I, could I touch, I'm sorry, can I touch off?
We, when we turn in the vacants, bathrooms are painted semi-gloss, high gloss. So it doesn't give the opportunity to the mold to grow with moisture. A lot of residents, when they receive their bathrooms and they receive their units, they wind up painting their bathrooms to their cost. So they wind up painting it flat. Now, flat paint is not a good paint to have in a bathroom in a moisture area. So that's a lot of the cause of mold and mildew growing. A lot of it is just soap scum and mildew, not mold, a lot of it could be mold. So we have to go in and determine whether, okay, the bathroom has to get painted to the high gloss. Or we can't do it because the resident doesn't want it, because they just spent so much money on their paint, they want to keep it as it is. So we have to wipe it down. Okay, you're in the shower again, then a couple of days, the mold's going to come right back.
Let me actually, let me actually cover this. What, what could we?
Chair, I have a question after.
Oh, yes. What, what as an authority can we do to help you guys do your jobs more efficiently? Like what are the main things that you need?
We could do a great, we could do a better venting systems in the bathroom.
Better what?
A better venting system, which again.
Yes.
That's why the redevelopment is coming, there's lack of ventilation in our units.
Well, I mean, obviously, that's not fixed.
The temperature.
They need more people.
I can tell you under it.
The temperature of the.
So more people is the number one thing?
The temperature of the water is also higher, more people, temperature of the water, we keep it at 100, it's not hot enough. So we got to pump up the water to get the heat for the water to get hotter. Now, what that's creating, more moisture in the bathroom. So, oh, we bring the temperature down, oh, the water's not hot enough, you guys are not providing hot water for us. I mean, it's, it's one way or another. Or they'll keep the window open, when it's winter outside, steamy bathroom, now that's a call we got to go to the following week because they're growing mold. It's, it's a, it's a battle, it's a battle. With, with 20 guys that we have and 1,300 units, it's a battle. That's not even indicating boiler rooms that we have to tackle, the outside of the buildings that we have to tackle. Dealing with the inspired inspections that we now hit again with, it's, it's a lot. And we're trying our best and we're doing our best as an entity to satisfy our residents, to make sure that they get a better living in the best that we can provide them. Not that we're avoiding them or trying to run away from them. I mean, I personally have done major, major jobs, and I have to put my hands in because we're short-staffed. It's, it's, it's not an easy battle, it's not. And, and we're sorry that our residents are going through with the mold, but if they help us out in the aspect of not putting flat paint, maybe we can educate them on not putting flat paint in their bathrooms, that's a major key.
Alright, so that's, that's a good one.
That's a major key, we have to keep the bathrooms high gloss and we can wipe them down.
Maybe drop off flyers in, in all the units, Director?
Sure. I mean, we complete, I wanted to say, we complete about between 900 and 1,100 work orders in one month. So it is a lot.
And that's coming from stack pipes, electrical issues, replacement of bathtubs in-house. I mean, these are things, water heaters.
Cabinets.
Cabinets, doors, windows, we try our best, a lot of these windows are obsolete, so we're trying to look for another source of, so we can upgrade our windows, so we can add and retrofit the proper screens. Right now, these windows are obsolete, we can't find these screens. So we have to get them custom-made, and that's months and probably years in front, so.
What I would like to take a look at this coming month, though, is, is how does this lady's bathroom, she says it's been forever? What, what happens there? What happened there? I think it's going to talk to the manager and to look at your work order records for her unit as well.
Absolutely, absolutely.
No?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Because as they know, when those calls come in, I mean, we jump on them. If I get a call and say, Mr. Recko, I've called in and it's been a month since they've been, I mean, we jump on it, they hear from me. Two weeks since we have, they hear from me. So I'm surprised to hear that, but we will check.
Director, James has a question.
Yes, a question and a suggestion. Um, over the past 10 years, I've walked around this housing authority quite a bit. In fact, I met the staff one-on-one my first year to get an idea of what our challenges were here at the housing authority. Uh, sometimes the best solution is not to ask the questions here, but to go and see it directly. And maybe you could schedule a one-on-one meeting with the staff to go see exactly what the public is talking about.
I think, going back to that, I think we have made it perfectly clear at our last meetings that any meetings that any commissioner here would like to have with the staff will have to go through Director Recko's. So if any commissioner here.
Why is that? This, this, the, the public is bringing something to our attention.
Okay, and if you'd like to meet with the public concerning their request, then you're more than welcome to do that. But our executive director is Mr. Recko, and he has stated that anyone, any commissioner, that this, Mr. Recko reports to the Board of Commissioners, his staff does not report to us. That is his staff. And as he stated in our last meeting, clearly, any meetings that would like to be had with his staff, he would like to be present, and I would like that to be respected. We're not going back down this lane again, so I'm making it very clear to every commissioner. We, we had this, we had this conversation last month.
We didn't have a conversation.
Yes, we did, last month, we did have this conversation, and I'm pretty sure it's in the minutes, when it was going back and forth about, actually, you would, you wanted to have a meeting with one of the staff members or maybe two of the staff members, I'm not quite sure if it was one or two of them at that point. And Mr. Recko made it clear, or Director Recko made it clear, that he doesn't mind having a meeting, but because it's his staff, he would like it for him to be available at the meeting, to be at the meeting. So no one's denying your request to meet with the staff. Again, if you would like to have that meeting, please schedule that with Mr. Recko at his earliest convenience, and we can make that happen. Now, if you are truly concerned about the residents' concerns, I would suggest that maybe you sit with them once in a while and visit them in their homes, and then you would understand what they're talking about.
Madam Chair, I have been denied repeatedly the opportunity to meet with staff. That what you just said is incorrect.
If, if you followed what Director Recko stated, and again, this is the last time, and I'm going to ask everyone to move on because I'm not going to repeat myself again, okay? If you would like a meeting with Director Recko and his staff, you are more than welcome to do so. Please reach out to Director Recko, who's sitting right next to you, and schedule that. Unfortunately, it cannot always be on your schedule, he does run a housing authority of 1,325 units. So unfortunately, it cannot be at the drop of a, of a dime, or we have staff who have work to do. So if, they can coordinate for you to come in and meet with them, I'm pretty sure, Director, you would not have a problem with that, am I correct?
Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, over the past 10 years, I've met with staff individually. I would like to know when this directive, this policy changed, when did this happen?
It doesn't matter when it changed, in 10 years, 10 years ago? What happened, I was not on this board 10 years ago. As the chairwoman, the director has stated that if he, any one of these commissioners would like to meet with the staff, it would have to go through him, and he would need to be um, also present, and I agree with him.
When did it become a policy of this housing authority where individual commissioners could no longer meet with staff?
It's, the staff does not belong to you, Commissioner.
The staff does not belong to me.
Exactly, it belongs to Director Recko.
That was not my question.
Okay, and I'm stating to you again, and I'm not going through this again, and we can, I mean, we're not going to argue over this the whole night, but I'm just letting you know that if you'd like a meeting with the staff, please do so with Director Recko, schedule it. Unfortunately, it's not going to be on your schedule, it's going to be on the schedule of the employees and the director. So thank you very much, and can we please move on? Does anybody have anything else they'd like to say?
If there's going to be a motion to move on, we'll move on.
Okay, um, are you, I, I, I mean.
Okay, then we'll keep talking, though. We have not been given an explanation as to when it became a policy.
It doesn't need to be a policy, the director runs the housing authority.
If it's not a policy, then help me to understand.
You tell me where does it end the bylaws, where in the bylaws does it state that we need a policy for you to meet with, with the employees? We do not answer, the employees do not answer to us, they answer to Director Recko.
Then I don't need to go through the director.
You do, he, he's their boss.
May I, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so when we took housing authority classes, which is, was super important.
10 years ago?
I mean, when you took, the person that, one, it was actually over COVID, and they, what they made a really big deal about was, I think it was called um, the basic one, Housing for Commissioners. And what they made a big deal about is, you are not the boss of any, of the housing authority. You are, you are the oversight board, volunteer oversight board, to make sure things, that checks and balances in place, and to be a public servant, and to do, and to, and to try your best to make it better for all. And that's the, summarizing that, and they said, the number one thing you cannot do, and they said it, was meet with the staff. Or, or get involved in any way with the director's staff. And if you do, you have to have their blessing and meet with them, it was in the training.
That is a complete misrepresentation of the training.
Maybe that's.
And if it is not, if that is the training, then why was it okay for me to meet with staff individually?
Maybe they were doing it the wrong.
Well, then that was 10 years ago.
So Director Recko was doing it the wrong way, three years ago, two years ago, five years ago?
I don't think he was, when he was here, I don't think he was doing that.
When he, I, I hired him, he's been doing that for the last five years, it's only been the last eight months that that has changed.
This isn't, that's not good policy, so Barbara and I are, are saying.
It's not good policy.
It's not.
No.
Right, he said it's not policy, so what, what is the basis?
You can't go into your boss.
What is the basis for denying me access to staff? I apologize in advance, it's a little hard.
So for example, if you want to talk, if you're at work, right, I want to go see the president of NJCU. I have to, about something, I have to make an appointment, I have to go, and I can't just walk in there and demand things without having a process and having, and speaking with somebody.
Well, Madam Vice Chair, I have tried to make appointments, and I have been told that I can't meet with that staff.
That is correct, you can, exactly, and that's his prerogative, he is the boss.
Why?
I don't.
I, I don't need you, Director, I do not need you to give.
Unless there's a motion to move on, we're not.
Motion, motion, exactly.
Why, Director?
We're moving on.
Can you call?
Call, vote please, Director. Whoever has to.
Is the vote on the minutes?
No, to move on from the conversation.
From this conversation.
From this conversation.
Director, I'm ready to ask you a question.
I didn't know there was a motion on the.
The Chair uh, is in charge of presiding over the meeting, if the Chair says it's time to move on.
It's time to move on, I'm not going back and forth with this, we are not spending any further time. We were actually getting to the bottom of the issues that our residents here today came up and spoke about. This has nothing and pertains to nothing to that, so it is over. Now, what I would like to talk to you about, Director, I know that Erica also had something to state in regards to what the residents are stating, is with the bedbugs, I just want to make sure, I know there's a process where if an individual apartment is identified as having bedbugs, we're supposed to also be exterminating next door, up and down, is that happening?
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because that's scary, that this, you know, this poor gentleman is saying he's had it for so long, and obviously, we don't want four other apartments to also have the same issue. So I wanted to make sure that that was the case. And um, my, my next point goes to about the mold situation, right? So as you all know, I moved over a year to a beautiful apartment, I've said it plenty of times here, right? But I've also had the issue with the mold, and, and um, in my bathroom, and I haven't been there 16 years, I haven't. I've been there a year, if so, right? This is why it's so important that this redevelopment goes through, because, listen, if, if I call about the mold in my bathroom, they would literally be in my house every other week. I literally have taken it amongst myself to fix my own problem when it comes to, to the mold situation, because they have tried everything. They have, you guys have tried everything, right? And I know everybody can't do that, but I think it's important that we realize these buildings are so old, and yes, they're going to go in and they're going to fix that mold that's happening, and it's going to look beautiful, right? And I can assure you that within three to six months, that same resident is going to be here again with that same problem, because it's happened to me. So I just want to say that it's not that it's being ignored, it's just, the, the buildings are so old, it's hard, it's hard. You can fix it, it's like Wacomole, like you say, fix it today, and three months from now, you're doing it again, and that's across the board, everywhere.
But it does sound like there is a, a somewhat solution to maybe help, and if we can educate the residents with.
That's true, I didn't know that about the semi-gloss paint, so that's new to me.
Yeah, that's a good one.
I would like to add on, you know, also this, the redevelopment is going to be great, pointing on buildings, cold air, the air outside, heat inside the unit, there's a lot of things that add on just to this mold situ, situation. A lot of it is not mold as well, building, you know, shower, the soap's come all over the wood, uh, you don't wipe it down, it's going to grow, you have to wipe it down.
So education, those two things.
And the types of paint that they could use, I think maybe we had a list for residents of the types of paint that they can use, it would also be helpful.
We stuck with high gloss, bathrooms and kitchens.
I was going to say, maybe we could do an F, like a FAQ in English and Spanish, the most important, like a one-page FAQ, and say, some of these things that can help maintenance, if we meet, somebody has suggestions. And then we could, you could put it out on social media, or at the doors, or when you meet with the new tenant, or in the books.
Or driving, driving your, driving your quarterly meetings.
And the video.
Pop in the newsletter.
We're talking about it.
And then you have, just like your five, like things, not, not, not so many, so it's cumbersome for everybody, just a few things to maybe make it easier.
I think that can be helpful.
See, that, that's, that's productive solutions from a, a good conversation that we just had. That's all, I'm not, I hope you, I don't bring it up to like, put blame, I know your jobs are really hard, you have tons and thousands of requests, but that's all we're trying to do, that's what our jobs are doing, is to try to help with solutions and get the conversation started.
And I think also as commissioners, other than myself, you got, a lot of them don't live here, so they don't understand it. So having this conversation also allows them to understand what, what, what's going on and how often you guys are trying your best to do the job. So we never, I never, me personally, never want this staff to feel that you guys are not appreciated at all, because that's not the case. It's not my case, and I'm pretty sure it's not the Vice Chair, as well as the, I can't speak for everyone, but I can definitely speak for myself and the Vice Chair.
And I, I'd like to echo the Chair's comments and say that no member of the staff should ever feel for any kind of retaliation for helping a commissioner.
Thank you. Um, Director, I think it's time, does anybody have any questions left on, no? Director, I think we can move on to your. I'm sorry, public portion is closed, my love, if you'd like to wait till the end of the meeting, we will gladly speak with you, okay? Thank you. Um, Director, if you'd like to move on with your.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Um, on August 26th, there was a very large party that happened over at the horseshoe section of Marshall Drive. Um, it was really alarming, there was alcohol being served, there was, um, there were problems there. Um, and consequently, we got together with the Security Committee. Um, Commissioner Reyes was there, our other commissioners were there.
Madam, Madam.
Reverend Forbes was there. Um, we had a very, very productive meeting with the police chief and the sergeants, and did a, a plan and a strategy for the following weekend, because the social media said that they were going to do it again. And I am really, really proud to say that they did not do it again, um, because we counteracted it. And so it's very important that when folks hear that something's going to go on, tell us. Our communication with the police is very strong. Uh, we did a number of things there to make sure that those people coming down from Jersey City, those people that were ready to party and cause trouble, could not actually get there. So we were really proud of the Police Department and what, um, what happened during that weekend. And I know we might have a police person or two in the, in the room, and I know Sergeant Collins is here. He's just been a key in our collaboration with the police. Um, so Sergeant, what is your take on that weekend?
Sergeant William Collins, Hoboken Police. Um, no, I, I, I think it went well. Um, it worked, the plan that was put in place worked. Um.
What was that?
The plan that was put, uh, the Housing Authority put out a blast in English and in Spanish, you know, warning that there was, uh, we received information that there was going to be an unsanctioned event in the Housing Authority. Uh, it went out on social media, on the Housing Authority's end.
One door to door?
Yep, everything they did, social media-wise, we were able to retweet it and put it on our social media, our, our, both our police unions did it. Within a couple hours, we know that, uh, the people that need to see it seen it because we monitor social media, and it was posted on uh, certain people's pages, you know, just saying, you think this is real, or whatever, the police can't do this, or the Housing Authority, he can't do this, you know, they can't stop us from, you know, having an event, whatever we want to do. So it worked, uh, Friday night, I can let yous all know, so Friday night, I was down there, in at the 4:00 in the morning, the Director was down there most of the night, standing with us. Um, we had great conversation all night, meaning the Director was walking around on patrol. Um, then Saturday night, both Directors were down there with the, the cops that were there. We had word that it might have moved somewhere else, so we kept an eye, we put lights in place, brightened up the area.
Brought those temporary lights back out.
Yep. Yeah, so if you noticed by Third and Marshall, um, uh, right by 318 on the corner there, PSC and G took down those dim, dim lights, they, they put better lights up. Right on Third and Marshall, if you go, just look up, there's two spotlights there, those are PSC and G, they replaced them that Monday. Uh, no, otherwise, um, that was it on the police end, everything.
And you just showed up, I mean, you were there in force.
We were there, yeah.
Together.
The other Chief Aguirre put overtime in, uh, I can tell you I was there on overtime, uh, with a few other people. He, he upped the, the TO that night, we went down there and everybody was safe.
We made a difference.
You know, there was a sign put by the light rail, that zero tolerance for drinking in public.
Signed by the light rail, so when they got off, zero tolerance, no poking.
Yep, um, that was it, and uh, in our meeting, I know you, you were away, right, I believe, you missed a good one, because by far, I can tell you on the police end, and I could speak for the Chief as well, and I think the Director agrees, everybody, that was by far the best meeting we've had to date ever. In my, I'm, I'm a police officer for almost 22 years, the best meeting we've had with the Hoboken Housing Authority was that day.
In person.
In person, uh, you know, a couple people were on Zoom, right, I think, but in person mainly. Uh, you know, a couple people were on Zoom, right, I think, but in person mainly. Um, and right at the kick of the meeting, we were, uh, monitoring the cameras for other reasons, and we were able to get a gun off the street, right on the corner of Fort and Harrison. We ran out, myself and Sergeant McCord, with our patrolmen that were taking somebody down at gunpoint and had a gun on him. So, I mean, uh, and those cameras, that's due to the cameras, just so you know. So, at any point when camera talk comes up for the Housing Authority, I would beg you all to support it, because that was a pure example of the cameras working. We didn't have those cameras, I don't know what would have happened, where, would have went further that day with that guy, or people had knives on them, you know, three arrests were made, couple knives taken off and a gun taken off the street, so.
I did not know you could move so fast.
Yeah.
In person?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little heavy. It's a fat job.
Sitting on my conference table and the call came in, and they were like, chung, gone.
But, and then also just to the residents, anything, you know, please, please know that we are here. I, I said it last month, I'll say it every month, you know, anything, please feel free. Officer in the back is Mark Mormon, everybody should know him, I believe, right?
Yes, we do.
So, you know, he, Mark mainly works four to 12, so if any, at any time, that, that's an example of, I get it, some people don't feel comfortable that you have Mark, you have Damian Bates, Tyrone Huggins.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you have who, who Bates?
Damian Bates. Well, I can't give out their personal number. Their phone number is 911, no, 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 I'm only kidding. You could always reach out, we could always get in touch with somebody, you know, there's, there's a lot of people, both Quinones brothers, there's, no, not 911, not to just talk to them, but, listen, always call the police station if, if you need somebody, our 4202100 number, you know, i- if they are working, we, we have no problem that's, you know, listen, this is what we're here for, this is our job, this is what you're, you pay taxes for, whatever, you know, we are here, I promise you. You know, I know not everything's always perfect, 'cause I don't think anybody in this world is, but we try very hard to be as perfect as we can, so, I mean, you know, but, uh, I mean, that's really it, I mean, everything, knock on wood, was safe and.
We'll have another meeting coming up soon.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little more on notice would be good for that.
We're, um, we're on our way with the city's Corporation Council, council here for working on, if you want, yeah, to make it better for us, you know.
So, uh, our council came to that meeting too. So, as an extension, we talked about some different city ordinances we may be able to pass that will help the police gain more access to our property and have more powers on our property. And we looked at a couple from a couple places, and we also talked about a revision to our nighttime policy that would reflect those changes in the ordinances. So, this council is working on it, and we're gonna be reviewing that over the next month or so. I think that would be really helpful.
We're not taking our foot off the gas on that.
I mean, if I could add to that, uh, the chief actually came with the same idea, I had gone in doing some research, um, so we essentially both had the same idea. I gave them some examples from throughout New Jersey, I know that they've already done a little bit on their part to check with some other municipalities and see what they're doing, what works, what might not work, what could be done in Hoboken, um, so.
Is that in regards to like trespassing?
Uh, trespassing, the main thing would be, um, it's not really open container, right, uh, public consumption. What could be done on private property versus public property, and is there a way to, for example, designate the Housing Authority as public property for that one purpose, for the purpose of, uh, public consumption, um, which would give the police a little bit more authority to come onto a property and say, hey, you can't be drinking that open container here. Not to say you can't go up in your unit and things like that, um, but not out in courtyards and things like that. So, that's one possibility, there are a few different things. Um, and, uh, I've already, the chief has already followed up to make sure that that dialogue is still going, um, and where it stands now is Assistant Corporation Council is looking into it on the city's end, and she will get back to us as soon as she has a little bit more clarity.
So, unless anything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, Sergeant Collins. I just wanna, um, follow up with what the director was saying, I actually sat in on this meeting with the director and all of them, and I, um, want to extend my gratitude to the director and the entire Police Department. You guys know I'm your biggest critic, right? But I'm also your biggest supporter. So, um, but I must say that, that, when, when Sergeant Collins sits up here and says that that was probably one of the best security meetings that we had, I must agree. I think we all went in there with the mind frame that we need to find a solution, we were proactive, I wanna, you know, we were proactive in making sure that everything that was gonna go on that weekend, there was a certain way that it was going to happen, and it wasn't a last minute, we weren't reacting to something that was happening, and I think that helped the situation. So, I did send an email to the mayor and to the city council individuals who were, um, part, who were aware of the issues that we were having, and just letting them know that as, not only a resident, but as the board chair, that I am extremely proud and thankful to Director Recko, who like Sergeant Collins said, was out there that entire holiday weekend with them, um, to Sergeant Collins, the other sergeants, and the police officers that were there, who were there not just that night, throughout the day. When I tell you that it was shut down mode, it was shut down mode. There was no leeway for anything to happen, and it actually was one of the safest times that I felt, living there. So, thank you so much, and I think if we keep this up, we can curb the problem that we're having. So, thank you, guys. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. And thank you Reverend Forbes was out there.
Yes, that's correct. I, that's also correct, Rep. Forbes also, as a commissioner, was out there with, with the individual, with the director and the officers.
So, um, moving on then, um, our, uh, as I mentioned earlier, the Security Guard Service, uh, Frank has been working with them, um, since the resident meetings that were held the past couple weeks, and it was mentioned earlier that the security guards are not always showing up when they're not there. By the way, they don't get paid, uh, because we do check to make sure they're there or not, but that's unacceptable if they're not there. So, a meeting was held, uh, with the management of Layer Rock Security. They are now doing a new procedure of giving us, uh, not only daily, um, sign-in sheets for their employees, but they're also giving the sign-in sheets that they are making people sign as they come into the buildings. And we are arranging that meeting with the Resident Advisory Board and the residents and the security company. You wanna add anything to that, Frank?
Um, no, I do know that, um, from the beginning, the idea was that people were gonna sign in, and I know that it's been a struggle, sometimes just checking that. So, this last effort was to, to make sure, so they start submitting in the sign-in sheets. Obviously, now some, what we're getting is a little bit now from the other side. Now, we're getting the residents saying that they're uncomfortable because they're having to sign in, in and out every time. So, we're still meeting through that, we might get to a compromise where then, maybe as long as the tenant just shows their ID with their picture, that they don't have to sign in, because obviously, if just someone comes in with an ID and they're not checked, it's possible that they were using somebody else's ID to get in. So, at least if we can just, so we're not really monitoring the ins and outs of our tenants, and that's not the purpose of it. The whole point is that after eight o'clock, and because, um, the security guard company folks, they, they rotate, and they might be new or whatever, they might not know who our residents are, right? So, it's important that they do ask every person that comes in, they wanna see, even if they buzz themselves in, so that's where we are right now. And we did have a series of meetings with the residents, and, and we did talk about some of the, some of those issues, and, uh, one of the questions that did come up, I, I shared that with you, and we're looking into that, is it, is it legal for us to ask our tenants to sign in and out every time? So, we are gonna do research on that. In the meantime, I did ask the security guard to continue to ask for it, and if any resident feels uncomfortable, to respect that as long as they're a resident. If they're not a resident, you gotta sign in, period. So, that's where we are with that. Uh, as far as, unfortunately, sometimes people do call out sick, um, every time anyone's gonna be even late, or if they're completely out, I get first attacks, and then if they, they can't get a replacement, I get an email, so that's, they get adjusted for the hours. So, we're not, Sandra, thank you, we're not, we're not paying for time they're not here, but still, unfortunately, sometimes coverage once in a while can happen, even for us, our staff, you know, some days, people are out. But in general, um, we have moved in a better direction with them. Um, there's even the, the next step is now maybe doing some perimeter walks is one of the things that came up through the resident meetings, so we're gonna continue to adjust with the company, but I do feel that they've come a, a long way, and the reports are definitely much more thorough. I have Natalie here who reviews those, those reports and those cameras, and we've seen them, and it, and it has gotten better. Um, I do ask residents to please, some folks like to keep them company, you know, it's not for them to be with residents, so that continues to be the, it's almost like a little bit of a hangout, you know, from two in the morning to four in the morning with residents, so it's natural, you know, people that are walking around, but, but for the most part, uh, uh, as part of our resident meeting, one of my questions to you guys was, were you happy with the security guard company? Were you happier, are you happier by having it or not having it? Overwhelmingly, everybody agreed that they were, uh, happier to have it. So, I think that we are moving, and we're gonna continue to tweak them to get them to, to a much function, better function.
Don't go away.
Yes.
As long as you're up, let's talk a little bit about the process of notices for cause and evictions, Matt is there. I know you and Matt have been working real hard on that for the past month, that came up at the last meeting, and I wanna make sure that we talk a little bit about the progress we made.
And even before we started, if I may address, Andrew, Andrew, you had a question I was never able to get back to, um, about the timeline. Remember, we had done kinda like a, a thing, as we were going through that timeline, then we got to that first, kinda like where we were gonna start going to court? When we came to that meeting, I think that was maybe April or so, and we said, okay, we're ready to go, is when the idea, the thought came up that we don't give statements. And then it was the shared agreement here that until we gave statements, not to go to court. So, yeah, that actually put like a three or four month bump, because remember, we worked on the statements for like a couple of months, and people were, and then eventually the statements rolled out, so that kinda stopped that process of what we were hoping that we would do, but.
And those rent collections.
That was for the, for those letters and the rent collections and going to court, right? So, but we are back on that path. Last month, we were almost there, I had a personal loss, and I know that, that there was timing issues, so we probably could have gotten to court last month. We didn't, but we are at the point now, right? Uh, Matt, uh, we have the first batch of families that we're going to court with. The letters have been very successful, when I get to my portion of the, of the, of the presentation, you're gonna see that in this last month, um, an extra 30 families entered into repayment agreements, and, um, as part of the, as part of that, an extra $200,000 was added to the repayments. So, so the letters are having the, and just to, for example, um, in our first poll that we were gonna go to court, we were going for 25 families, and out of those 25 families, half of them showed up with, and entered into repayment agreement. So, now, really, really, out of that first batch of 25, I believe 12 or 13 is what we are actually gonna be in court with, right? Now, that's what we're already setting up, and now, we already started this month, now we went to that next batch. Um, part of the breakdown that I'm gonna give you, and, and one of the other things you had asked, if we can see like where, who owes 30 days, who owes 60 days, who owes 90, so I'll give that as a handout as well, but if we're gonna go to that portion, I can get the handouts if you like.
Yeah. How about the four causes, is really what I wanted to focus on.
Four causes, a few four causes that, that we are now at, at that point as well, and I know, in fact, somebody received one today at Foxville, I believe, right, as well, 'cause someone, we got a call, I don't know if that was from us. So, then she got another four cause from somebody else.
That must have been one of the, um, one issue by the managers.
Gotcha.
Okay, yes. Yeah, there are a handful of, uh, what I would say more serious lease violation issues that we have been in contact on, and notices either have gone out or are in the process of going out. Managers are still handling some of the more day-to-day lease violations, um, but some of the more serious ones, uh, have been referred to our office, and I've been working with Frank on issuing those notices. Thank you.
So, I believe that you have some dates, right? There's some dates for November or something, I guess it's our first few courts, is when we'll, we'll be in court for the first time?
Not yet, so we have to wait, unfortunately, we still have to wait on the court to set a court date.
So, that takes a little time.
And they actually just started, again, a slightly new procedure, starting September 1st, in terms of how they're doing it, which should speed it up in some regard, um, but now, they've essentially guaranteed that once they assign a court date, it won't be for at least five weeks after it's scheduled. So, the tenant will have at least five weeks, um, notice prior to the court date, which, I mean, since COVID came along, is nothing extraordinary, I mean, it's been taking much longer than that, but pre-COVID, we used to be able to file a case and have a court date within three weeks, um, at most. So, it's a little bit slower than it was pre-COVID, but things are starting to slowly pick up.
I do believe, Matt, if, right, once we have that first batch, we will always be in court now.
Right, exactly.
Cause now that the system.
Particularly with the, uh, non-payment. They will be fairly regular that, um, just because the 13 are done, doesn't mean that we're gonna wait a month or anything like that to start doing, uh, another batch of a certain amount. Mainly right now, just to allow authority staff to be able to handle, um, enough at a time, as opposed to dumping 100 non-payment cases on them at once. So, that should be on a rolling basis, and the four cause filings, um, can happen, because of the nature of, for example, if there's a notice to quit, usually that has an effective date of the first of the month, just because you have to wait a full, um, lease period. So, those usually, beginning of the month, that's when a complaint will be filed, and that'll kick off the process.
So, I, I just wanted to, I know, we, we hadn't gotten back to that, so I just wanted to end that. I don't know if.
So, continuing under security, thanks, I'll get you back up later. Continuing on security, that Harrison Gardens capital fund allocation, uh, for security, um, is underway, um, making courtyard accessible only to residents, and defensible space behind 400 down Harrison Street, those are all in design, and we did apply for this special security grant, haven't heard anything yet. On Hoboken Housing Forward, boy, it's just slow, 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 we're moving along. The city expects to have the draft redevelopment plan out for comment next week. So, we will all get it, and we will all take a look at it, and we will all submit our comments, okay?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
They should, they, the city should have their redevelopment plan out for public comment next week, okay? So, as soon as that gets out, I will make sure, I personally notify everyone when that comes out, and we'll get it to everyone, so we can start taking a in-depth look at it. If we wish, we can invite the planners back, you know, they came last month and gave us that presentation, they told us that they were gonna have a draft plan through the city, the city has been reviewing it within their own inside, they have not been making it public yet, but they expect to go public with a draft next week. So, once we have that, we will all be able to take a look at it, there will be some public forums on it, but I would suggest that maybe we request to have maybe even a special board meeting, if you're interested, for them to go through that with us, okay? I think that would be a really great idea to do, so we really understand it, okay? So, between now and next month, um, time and notification being of the essence, that will probably be close to the first week of October, I would think at this point, if we can get the dates together.
So, we're still at the problem where we don't have a location, is that right?
We don't have a what?
A location for the first building?
Well, our first building's definitely going into the Harrison parking lot, there's no doubt about that.
Just how many floors?
Yeah, and we, and they've just given that plan, they will be giving guidance that you can go up a certain amount of floors for the entire plan, right? So, that hasn't been decided yet. That will come when a developer comes out. And our process is, once the redevelopment plan is approved by the city, all right, then we go out for a developer. So, we can't go out for a developer until the redevelopment plan is approved by the city. Once we have a developer, we then start getting into that nitty-gritty, how tall are the buildings? Developer, let's bring out an architectural firm, bring out an engineering firm, design firm, we start moving forward then, as, and hopefully through the winter, that's where we'll be. I cannot wait, pushing, pushing, pushing.
Director, you just mentioned something about time of the essence, that seemed to be a repeating theme at the last meeting. Why is there time of the essence?
Because we wanna give these.
Excuse me, if I have to ask you to have your conversations outside again, then I'm just gonna ask the officer to take you out. I'm sorry, like, we cannot continue to do this. The court reporter needs silence. Thank you.
I think, I think the question was why is time of the essence? From my, from my perspective, is the faster we can redevelop, the faster we can provide good, solid housing for our residents. And right now, the condition of our old buildings is not what it should be. We talked about ventilation tonight and we talked about other issues tonight. We've got one elevator in each high rise family building. We need to renovate these buildings and redevelop these buildings.
So I'm, I don't disagree with any of that. I'm just a little concerned or confused by something that the gentleman from Higher Rule had said about HUD pushing this redevelopment. Is HUD pushing redevelopment?
Oh, sure.
Who at HUD?
I think he went on to this.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, who at HUD, the HUD Public Housing Department, if you will, wants us to redevelop? They understand that the Hope Open Housing Authority needs to redevelop in order to provide good housing. They understand that.
Yes.
And so they want us to continue to move forward.
So who is the person or persons that is they?
Our personal contact with them are few people. There's Wilson Henry Ellis that is with us all the time, weekly. I'm on the phone now, he's in our planning team. There is Roger St. Paul in Washington DC that we have bi-monthly meetings with, that we talk about where we are. So those are the two main people. You know, this housing authority has been a troubled housing authority for many, many years. And the only thing that is keeping us in troubled status, the only thing, is the condition of our units. And the only way to fix our units is to redevelop. So they are interested in us making progress in redevelopment as quickly as possible.
Okay. Now, is Mr. R. B. Ellis an employee of HUD?
No, he's an employee of HUD.
And is Mr. St. Paul an employee of HUD?
No, he's an employee of HUD.
So can I meet with them one-on-one?
I have no say in that.
Okay. How do I reach them? How do I contact them?
I suppose I could find some phone numbers for you.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. Are you going to give me a deadline? Like 10 o'clock tonight or something? Well, I'm on vacation, staring tomorrow, so we'll take a look and see when we can get it for you. I can't do it now because I'm in a meeting. Possibly, but right now I'm in a meeting, so.
So now I'm in a meeting?
That's right. So if you want a definitive time, you know, I'm not going to give you 10:02 tomorrow morning. I'm not going to say that because I can't say that I can meet that deadline. So I'll get it to you as soon as I can.
Director, I'm sorry. Permission there? I'd like to say something.
Yeah. The main reason that Washington's wall of buildings obsolete and obsolete means they, they come down and then they will back up.
They've declared our buildings obsolete. They have. They've got it done. So that's where our redevelopment planning process is right now. So it's going to be an interesting year. Can't wait to see it happen. We also, as part of that effort, are projecting our management needs and positioning into 2023. Part of that effort is the proposed procurement policy you see in front of you tonight. We've been working with the technical assistance folks that are designated by HUD on this policy. They have been a big part of it, as well as HUD has been a big part, part of putting this policy together. Mr. Ellis has been involved, as well as the enterprise team, as well as our legal counsel, as well as our staff, Mr. Amel and the, and the other senior staff. So that's one of the first steps to get us ready for the future, to make sure our policies are good. We're also going to be looking at our public housing admissions and continued occupancy policy and the current five-year annual plan that we submit to HUD to make sure everything's ready to move forward into RAD and to move forward into this big transition we're going to be doing over the next few years. On policy and outreach, our newsletter is going out soon once again. We got it December? When we go?
She's coming out of that right now.
Where's she running? I don't know. I, I can't remember when our next one's coming out.
That's newsletter, right? When it's coming out?
In October.
In October. So if you've got anything good for the newsletter, we have a suggestion tonight. We are going to have a special section on trash in there as well. Yeah, so we're working on trash. But if you have any special ideas, please give it to us. As always, if you've got an idea for a Hall of Fame inductee, if you know somebody that should be inducted into our Housing Authority Hall of Fame, please pass it on to us. Please feel free to meet with me. We, if you called down to our office and fill out an intake, you can meet with me. We don't, hi. So you're welcome to come down. I meet with probably 10, 15 families a month. So come on down if you've got an issue that's sitting around and your manager isn't doing what they should be doing for you. Fox Hill Gardens first phase is almost complete and we've been needing to identify our next round of repairs. Housing for Hope Oak is meeting on September 26th at 7:00 PM. Our special capital projects, I mentioned earlier, the main gate and securing the courtyard is under design. Security camera installation is under design. On the courtyard paving, they've been doing some sample, some sample digging to see where the water table is under the courtyard. The first time I stuck some pictures in my report, I thought that was pretty cool. Hallway and stairwell refurbishment is going on and other REAC issues with that money. The laundry equipment installation is complete at all sites. The emergency generator work is in progress. Pre-insulation work is complete. We're just waiting for those generators to hit town and they'll be installed. Boiler replacement at Monroe Gardens, I was wrong in my report. It's actually out to bid already and it was, it's due on October 3rd. So we hope to have it to you at the next meeting, should we get our bids back. Our REAC Inspired project process now. Our sprinkler head issue, we've got a resolution to the board tonight to enter into a contract to fix all of our sprinkler heads. Our interior door replacement project is almost complete. Our plaster work is being done in-house and significant progress has been made, as well as kitchen cabinets. Our window repair, we talked about windows earlier. We did put in a grant application for new windows at Andrew Jackson, which would make a huge difference for us. So we're hoping that we get that. That is the same grant that we got last year for Harrison. Our sidewalk repair is completed and we're continuing to do some traps, staff training on our new Inspire inspection protocol. HUD is changing from REAC to Inspire, just as we get used to REAC. They're changing up on us. Yes, of course. So they will be out doing what's called Inspire inspections this year, probably in October, November. We are accepting rents online, everyone. If you're managers, sign up on the portal. And then we've got our occupancy and rent collection issues. Frank, you want to get back up and brag a little bit about us maintaining a 96% occupancy rate throughout our properties? So jump on in, I think you guys are doing a great job.
All right, so we continue to be at 96% occupancy. We have this month, Jackie's team turned over a lot of apartments that were kind of very close. So in the next month and a half or so, you should see, we should hit that 97 and even maybe that 80 would be beautiful. As far as what I was mentioning before that I attached to here, I gave this as a, as an attachment. If you could take a look at that one. And that just basically breaks down the, the money owed. This is, and I do want to clarify, this is 100% rent only, okay? There's no, no repayment or any other charges here. This is just outstanding rent. So in, as you can see, the total amount outstanding is 811,570, right? Out of that, then here's the breakdown for you, Andrew, of the, what, what of that is 30 days? What of that is 30 to 60? What of that is 60 to 90 and older? As well as giving you a breakdown of where those balances are coming from. As you can see, it's almost, you know, if you look at the senior buildings, Adams, Monroe, it's the 30. So that's kind of like the average. And CCG falls kind of like in that number. Our biggest problem is in Andrew Jackson, both south and north, and obviously Harrison Gardens. In the, the other report that you guys received last month, what I did want to show you was that in, in the August report, we were showing that we were at 42.77, right? Percent collection. We did make a progress on that. For this month, we're at 37.82. We are now down to 811,570 from the 900 and something that it was last month. Obviously, money.
You mean percent of the counts delinquent?
Yes.
So from 42.7 down to 30?
To 30, 37.82.
37.82?
37.82. So the number of families went down. The letters are having no good effect. We're starting to see more people, more families came in. Last month, we had 170 families, 107 with 530. This month, we have 134 families with 706,000 in repayments. So that was a big chunk in, in the one month. As we go to court now and we're going to start to see, and you know, it's that first round, I believe, should have the biggest impact. And then from nearby, we should see a spike in those repayments. The director was mentioning a little bit about how we meet with HUD and that was one of the things that we were sharing with them, of the success that we're having with the repayment agreements because they are, they are, they want to understand how we're doing it because New York is, and a lot of other of our neighboring housing authorities are experiencing the same issue. So they, they did want to know what we're doing with our, with our tenants receivables. So right now, as far as this month, we have 15 apartments that are ready to go. There are seven that are in turnover. Out of those 15, in the first couple of days that we received them, at least four, four of those are already leased up. We did have three move outs. We had some transfers. And then basically where we are right now, we're at the point that we're going to start to be at the very last little bit of our empty apartments. So that's really good news. What you're going to start to hear now is the pain about that we don't have anywhere to transfer people that are on transfer lists. So that'll be, you know, unfortunately, the side effect of not having vacant units. So, but the redevelopment is the long-term fix for that because that will right-size the families when we get to that point.
And you've been doing a lot of transfers?
Yes, included in our, in our move in, and there's transfers for different reasons. You know, we, we, we meet constantly with families every month and to our attention comes issues. You know, we, we met with a gentleman that, that's in the wheelchair, the circumstances. And so we have transfers that are for that. There's transfers that are on our transfer list. And then there's some, you know, for other reasons, could be domestic violence or, you know, other, other more serious topics. But all in all, I really, what main is is doing the, the work that we're doing together and the coordination of when it's done and how we go into lease mode right now is really working very well. So I really appreciate all, all the teamwork from everybody.
How did you break up the allocation of bringing in new tenants opposing leaving those units available for transfers?
So we have right now, pretty much a three to one, three to one. So for every three new lease ups, one transfer. So for every four lease ups, for every four new apartments, there should be at least three new lease ups and one transfer. Some months, our lease ups for new might, might go down. When you see the average at the end of the year, we wind up about that. We try to, we don't have like a specific formula, but we try to keep to that three to one. Some months, the circumstances make it so that it's one, a little bit less or more, but.
How many people are on the transfer list?
We still have about 200 families that are on transfer list. And you know, on that transfer list, there are some folks that, that we need to transfer because I, we, we also have a huge issue with over, overhoused, right? So, but the thing is, if you don't have an empty unit and you need the overhoused family into, we can't get the unit that we need that they're in the wrong unit size. So that's really the crux of the next juggernaut.
How many people on the transfer list are delinquent?
I don't have that now, but I can break that down.
Is it possible to reward people that are not delinquent and move them up on the transfer list?
A preference for not being delinquent.
But if you're not, if you're not even, we don't transfer.
Well, that's, that is a good point. If you owe money, we don't approve your transfer.
It works the other ways.
Right.
Right, yes. You qualify if you owe, yeah? And we go to the next person. Thank you, Frank. We did, we were awarded the best vouchers, but we haven't had the money award yet. So usually HUD toward the end of September, end of the fiscal year, the, they pull up and start actually giving you the letter saying, go ahead and spend. And we don't have that yet. As soon as that happens, we're going to be rolling forward with a project-based voucher. Our, the, on buildings, we are still accepting applications for any additional part-time building maintenance workers and full-time mechanics. Full-time mechanics are really needed. We need good plumbers and people that can do work. They're hard to find. We are looking for alternative processes for getting the cleaning, waxing cycle on our hallways completed since our bids came back very, very high. And we continue to ask the residents that if they've got issues, please contact your manager. We will be glad to follow up. If that doesn't work, please call us down at our central office. I did put in a report on the maintenance plumbing projects by HHA staff and Sammy's staff. Again, a ton of work by these guys. And then major maintenance unit repair by outside contractor list in your report today. We continue to focus on extermination, road and control. We're working on rolling out a Let's Talk Trash initiative to cover the proper disposal of trash and recyclables in both our family and elderly sites. It's hard to control behavior, as Sandra was saying. You, you get folks that will put trash into our areas that they shouldn't. They put trash outside of our trash bins, so rats jump into them. Having said that, let's get better at it. And I think there are ways we can get better at it and we're going to work on that. I am meeting with some folks that supply different types of trash bins, some different types of trash cans over the next month. And we'll see what we can find to button up our trash a little bit better and come out with a PR campaign with our residents. Finance is working on HMFA stuff, Housing Choice Voucher stuff, as well as our budgets, which you'll see later as a resolution, and contract management. And unfortunately, Danny Perez couldn't be with us tonight, but he did want to mention that we had one heck of a great summer in his report. We had the basketball league, summer camp, great trips for the seniors, Hershey Park for the, for the families, Familyhood Back to Schools, Oaks Back to School, Horseshoe Community Barbecue. We did love this summer. We had a, we had a good summer. Thanks to the rapport, thanks to Familyhood, the people that, that partner with us. We had a good summer. So thanks to everyone. We'll keep it going and before we know it, the holidays of the year, right? Right around the corner, right around the corner. So we do have a Hispanic heritage celebration coming up during the end of September. So keep in tune with that and we look forward to doing Halloween and the rest. And we'll get back to you next month on that one, on that stuff. So that would be the end of my report.
Director, I have a question in reference to the mice situation. I know that last week, I mean, last month, we kind of got into a brief discussion that the city was rolling out a mandate where bids were mandated on their trash cans or for their things. So did we ever get any word back if that also applied to us?
It will apply to us and we've, we've contacted the city. So we're going to be meeting with the city and I'm going to try to convince them to give us those cans all the way along Harrison and Jackson.
Okay.
They should do that along Harrison and Jackson. And then we're meeting with their supplier, like I said, we're meeting with folks to maybe get our own for our interior trash and recycle bins, right? So we're looking at both of those things now.
That's great news. My next thing is, do we have anything that we can put down in the meantime? Because literally you sit outside and the mice will literally go over your feet. It's scary. Like when we were at the basketball court and this, it's not a joke. I mean, we were at the basketball court watching the game and you just see them everywhere, like they're just everywhere. And of course, unfortunately. And of course, unfortunately, um, I have to be honest, it's a lot of, the issue is the residents. Because instead of putting the garbage in the garbage, they will throw it next to the garbage on the floor. So, that's what they're looking for. And I know, I witnessed it every day in front of my building. I witnessed it down by five sixty. So, I was wondering, um, I know there's, um, some, and I've said it here before, um, Amazon has it where you can put it down and it kind of keeps them away for, from, I guess, like, the park area where they're playing basketball, the kids are playing in the park. Because I can't tell you how many times I have not seen rats going into the park where our kids play.
Yeah.
And, I mean, at, as soon as it gets dark, you have to pull your kid out of, out of the park, because they're in there. So, I was wondering if we can put something down, maybe in the park, where it'll keep it away so that the kids, and I know it's, you know, fall is coming soon, but, I mean, parents still bring their kids to the park in the meantime. Um, but I just feel like, if, if there's anything that we can do, 'cause I get it, we can't exterminate the whole premises, but like, the park areas where the kids are playing and they're touching and...
And we'll keep trying, 'cause we've talked to the park and recreation at the city, too. They're in the same issue, the exact same issue. And, and I don't know of any magic bullet. We've got the rat hotels up, we've got the...
We're actually, we have a special project this weekend. We have, uh, one of our buildings, the rats, well, just to give you a little history on our buildings, our boiler systems, they used to provide heat underground. So, our major boiler station was at four hundred Paris, four hundred Marshall. So, now there's abandoned pipes that are actually running through our property. So, they're running in through the pipes and running out into certain buildings that they're able to excavate. One of our buildings, excuse me, we have at least three yards of dirt that we're removing this weekend, because they're, that's what they're using to get in and out. We're gonna cover it up, isolate it with wire mesh, concrete it, and just keep battling. We already did two buildings.
So, they dug the dirt out of the planks?
Right out of the pipe, they excavated it. I have photos, if you like, I can send them to you guys so you guys can see what we're dealing with our buildings. They're actually running in and out through the pipes.
But they're doing that on the exterior of the buildings. I mean, I can tell you, right in front of my building, there's two huge holes and, and that you can tell, Odessa can tell you. We have a few groundhog that ends up there.
See, now, that's, that's our downfall. Our downfall is we cannot pour any type of, uh, harm to either the scumps, the groundhogs. So, we can't cross-contaminate. We can't kill any other species other than rats. We can cover them, what a groundhog is gonna do, they get right back out. You've seen it personally with me on the machines, covering up, filling it up with gravel, filling it up with concrete.
Concrete?
They'll just come out. They'll keep digging it, it's, it's an uphill battle with them.
I, we don't put concrete, I wanna say we put dirt. I don't think it's the area where I live, I've seen concrete poured on there. I, I have seen a lot of dirt and other things, gravel maybe, put on there, but there, there hasn't been any, um, any concrete. I think if we did put concrete, just we wouldn't...
If you look at your platform, once you go home, you'll see that it's gonna be a layer of concrete coming out. They just excavate right underneath. But there is, there has been put concrete.
I'm gonna send you the pictures tomorrow, 'cause I'm sorry, Sammy, I love you.
No, no, I mean, listen, has, this is, has nothing to...
I gotta wait with you, 'cause we have, I need to eat every day.
And you don't see the scumps no more?
I think I have a photo, I'll send them to you, but I definitely have.
Yeah, so, that, that's just my concern, because there's so many holes, like, everywhere, everywhere. Against the building and it just...
How, how are we doing on going around with those holes, Sammy? Where'd you go?
I'm sorry.
You were there a minute ago.
Yeah, I was just grabbing my phone, 'cause I know I have some photos of that area. Um, what was that question again? I'm sorry?
Did that change? We had that system of going around and filling those holes.
We're still doing it. We're still doing it. Right now, we're gonna try to do the, the, the dry ice. So, we're gonna try to start off with the main office and see how it works from there, and then we'll expand out through the holes. 'Cause I'm pretty sure New York City, New York City is using the dry ice to actually kill them out and cover it up. And it's a lethal, uh, lethal way to go with other animals other than the rats, asphyxiating. So, I mean, that's a, that's a process that I'm gonna try to see how that works.
Maybe another strategy, meeting with the exterminator guys.
Meeting with the exterminator as well. We tried, uh, fumes, we tried everything.
Even Harrison Street, like Harrison Street, the regular main street. I was not even speaking where I live, 'cause I live towards the back. But Harrison Street side, a little bit before where the hangout happened, if you ever look on the sides, the holes in that build, in those buildings, sometimes you're walking and they're jumping out of the garbage can to run into the, into the, into the holes. And, or vice versa, they're running from the holes to get into the garbage can. So, um, yeah, these are...
So, if we go up on Third and Jackson, where they have that water park, and, uh, there's a legal, legal office right on the corner, Third and, Third and Mass. There's a tree stump. The floor is thick and probably, I would say, six inches. Two toes, rats are running in there, running in their parks as well. It's, it's just all over book.
No, I agree.
It's all over book. It's a battle that we're both fighting.
You have to walk through it every day. It's not, you know, it's not a site that, that we appreciate and we shouldn't have to. And, and I get it, I get it, what you're saying, but, um, I think we just need to do a little better. I'm sorry, I'm... My opinion, Odessa hears me every day yelling exactly before I go in my building.
They can wait for you to ask.
I know.
And they bite in the, the wires under the cars.
Thank you, Sammy, I appreciate it.
They bite you.
Thank you, Director.
I am done.
Thank you, Director. So, moving on to Resolution twenty-two-three oh-nine oh-one, Resolution of the Hoboken, of the Housing Authority of the City, of Hoboken to approve the minutes for the August tenth, twenty-twenty-three regular board meeting. Before, before we move on, I'd just like to, um, put it on the record that Rep Forbes has been on the meeting, but we never publicly stated it. Thank you.
Motion.
Second. Questions, Senator?
Uh, yes, I have a question. Actually, more of a, an addition to minutes for...
Could you just speak up, just a little bit?
Absolutely. So, for Resolution, uh, two-zero-two-three dash zero-eight point zero-seven, Resolution to approve a new contract for Director Eko. You got all that? Uh, I would like the minutes to reflect that Commissioner Russo proposed a twenty-five thousand dollar increase to the director's salary. Can we put that into the minutes?
Why, why wasn't that, why is that not in the minutes?
I don't know. It should be.
Was that an open session or closed session?
No, that's, that's closed session, so some things are not, those things are not supposed to be until it becomes...
Oh, so, I'm, excuse me, so, counsel, what, I, I mean, the contract is public information, so I, I thought it was okay to mention of those twenty-five thousand.
Just tell them, like, just, just so that they know, I said the closed portion's worth, and just...
Yeah. Oh, yeah, right, sorry, could you clarify, yeah?
I'm just sorry, like, I, I'm sorry to speak up, but just so...
That would be subject to adding to the minutes if there were a motion in the second to amend the minutes to reflect that.
Okay. And the closed portion...
And an affirmative, four affirmative votes.
Got it.
I'm sorry, four affirmative votes?
Four affirmative votes, yes.
I'm, I'm gonna say that.
The information that we just shared about closed session, when does that transcript become available to the commissioners?
That is up to the authority. Um, I mean, when it no longer is, uh, one of the justifications essentially for having a discussion in closed session, uh, it would become public. It still is a discussion of employment, um, so there still are race issues. So, it's not that immediately it becomes public information. However, you are correct that the resolution, uh, that was adopted as a result of that discussion was done in open session. Um, so that, to that extent, that would be part of the public record. The discussions regarding, um, any particular employees' employment would still remain, uh, closed, correct?
So, it would be appropriate to reflect that Commissioner Russo made that proposal?
It, it would be appropriate to request it, sure. I, I will leave it up to all of you, one level of detail, um, is appropriate to go into the minutes on a monthly basis.
Understood, so I'd like to make a motion.
Well, hold on, hold on, real quick. So, what is, what's discussed in closed session is supposed to be kept in closed session? So, isn't, I think, just repeating what was in closed session, breaking that?
It, it is kept in closed session until such time that it no longer is, uh, necessary to, um, keep it confidential essentially.
But he ju, he just broke the covenant, right?
Exactly.
There is a disc, uh, I mean, there is a discussion to be had about whether it's now public information, because the contract was adopted in public but, uh, in open session.
Madam Chair, but, because we can't talk about closed session matters, I'm not sure if the comment was exactly a hundred percent correct on that. That might have been a few of us trying to come up with.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, so if you wanna add my name to that list, I mean, no problem. But it's just, that's a, it, it was a, it was a way, it was a, it was a bargaining tool.
Well, wait, wait, now you guys are talking about what was discussed in closed session.
But we're not trying, wait.
The fact of the matter is that we went out of closed session into public session and then voted for it, for the increase.
Correct, so the increase, the total amount is not, before anybody says anything else, it's not, it's, it's public, right? The entire amount, because that's what we voted on, right? In public. Well, in public, I'm sorry, the public, it was twelve o'clock at midnight. You guys were probably home by that time, but it was in, in public session. Am I correct?
The, the agreement itself is a public document.
It is, but what was discussed in that is not...
To, to the extent that it pertains to a discussion of, um, performance with respect to employment, yes.
Yes, okay.
It should remain...
So, again, the question then becomes, did what Commissioner Sanford say, which was spoken in closed session, is that a breach of confidentiality and something that should not happen in public?
It's not necessarily confidentiality. Um, I, I don't know that that particular aspect of the contract relates to performance. Um, so there is an argument that it is not, it is no longer necessary for it to be, um, part of the closed session. However, normally, that decision would be made by the authority itself, um, rather than an individual commissioner. And I will point out that this board is free to do whatever it would like with respect... Just let me finish, please, Madam Chair, with respect to the minutes. But that level of detail, historically, this board has not included, um, in its minutes.
I'm, what is, whatever is discussed in closed session is supposed to stay private and confidential to all matters, correct?
Uh, that's...
No matter what it relates to, whether it's salary, whether it's negotiation...
That's correct, until such time that the authority itself, which would be the board, determines that it is no longer necessary that it remain confidential.
So, what happens when a commissioner...
He just said, who said what and, and a dollar amount that was in closed session.
I understand.
So, what are we talking about?
I, I only asked a question.
No, you, no, you say it in public.
You highlighted the commissioner and what he said or what he did in closed session?
Yes, I highlighted what that commissioner did.
And?
That's a violation of closed session remarks or whatever.
You are correct, Commissioner, that the authority...
So, what's our next, what do we do now?
Now, what do we do?
So, then we can discuss whether we wanna do that or not, right?
No, you already did.
You did already.
You already did it without us discussing.
Or should we go into closed session to then have a discussion? I, I don't know.
I don't think...
I think you should have asked the lawyer prior to saying your comment in public. That's my opinion.
Okay, next time I will.
And you would like, and you said you wanna put a motion out.
With respect to, excuse me, Madam Chair, with respect to the request made by the commissioner, I don't know that it rose to the level of a motion. If the commissioner would like something added to the minutes, the commissioner can make a motion. If there is a second, a vote can be held. If there are four affirmative votes, then that motion would pass. If there are not, if there's no second, if there's not four affirmative votes, the vote would fail. Um, the question of whether, um, that information had been made public by the authority is a different question. Um, we can get further into that if you'd like. Um, there is no clear, um, guidance or anything in the authority bylaws on what happens when something, uh, from closed session is disclosed without the authority itself authorizing the disclosure.
You, you understand that it was inappropriate to do that?
I don't understand, no. It, it seems like a gray area.
Seems like something...
Out of the bundle of caution, we can drop it.
Well, there, there is, there is a question...
You already said it's on the record.
Can you explain to him that that was inappropriate?
It's not on the record, it's not...
I'm not gonna necessarily, Commissioner, get into inappropriate... There is a question over whether or not that, uh, information, that part of the discussion should remain part of the closed session going forward. However, that decision is the authority's to make, not necessarily an individual commission.
Which I did not know then, but now explained to me now, and we can drop it.
So, there's nothing to... I just, it's a bad, really bad question.
I, I understand. I think what you're getting to is there, is there any recourse?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and...
I'm not looking, I, I don't think there should be like a, I don't think there's a punishment or anything, but I think he needs to be told that you can't repeat things that are set in closed session.
I was just told that.
Correct. It's the authority, and in this case, the board itself's determination on when to make something...
I mean, as for...
So, it has to be the board in its entirety?
Correct.
Okay, so, so as a next time, as a next time, what I should do then is, is what?
If, if there's a question about whether or not, um, something that you would like to discuss is, uh, part of the public record, um, it may be more appropriate next time to ask that question first, and then a discussion can ensue on whether or not that has been made public.
Okay, and then, or the appropriate place to go and talk about it is in closed session? So, I would then make a motion to go into closed session?
If you wanted to have a discussion, you could always make a motion. Again, you would need a second, you would need four affirmative votes to go into closed session.
Absolutely. So, if we had four affirmative votes to go into closed session to then discuss this, to then discuss whether we wanted to then put it into the public realm, that would be the venue to do it?
Correct.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to go in the closed session.
Is there a second? There's no second. Sorry. Can we move forward?
Are we ready to vote?
I, I have one more thing to say. Um, you stated that our bylaws state that there's nothing that basically could stop a commissioner from doing what they've just, what just happened. Is that correct?
Uh, I would say not necessarily that there's nothing could stop it. There is nothing in the bylaws that speaks directly to the disclosure of something that was set in closed session. Without the, um, authorization to disclose it by the board itself.
So, then, what would be our options to change the bylaws to have something like that on them?
You could consider a change to the bylaws, um, in terms of how something is disclosed.
But isn't there a disclosure bef, uh, before we enter into closed session that states nothing is to be repeated or in the public?
Yes.
Right, it's also part of the resolution that, to the extent that, um, it's appropriate to make something no longer confidential part of the closed session.
Does it say something in the resolution before entering closed session that no comment should be exposed in public?
Uh, it's not that explicit. I would argue that it's understood based on the fact that there is a closed session, um, that you're excluding the public from a portion of the conversation. By its very nature, there it is confidential, and there is specific language about the fact that it will be kept confidential until such time that the board itself or the authority itself determines it's appropriate.
I think it's important then, from here on, when we do have a closed session, that we come up with that language and that we remind all of our commissioners that that's what we expect, that's what I would like to happen, first and foremost. Second of all, um, as you guys know that I'm new to this, so I need some guidance. But Matt, what would be our next option to actually, um, adding, um, or changing the bylaws to actually, um, to put a bylaw in actually about what just happened?
I can look into it for you. I mean, if you wanted to amend the bylaws for this or any other reason, um, there's a...
The time?
A notice period for, um, in terms of, uh, draft being sent out a notice period for, in terms of draft being sent out to each of the members of the board, and that it would be subject to a vote.
Okay, so I would like to start something like that, just so you guys are aware. I don't know if everybody's on board with me, but I definitely would like to have something like that.
At your direction, Madam Chair, I can look into that.
Absolutely, can you please? Thank you.
And are we still voting on the minutes?
Yes. Any further questions, concerns?
Anthony Forbes.
Commissioner Forbes, thank you.
Andrew Impastato.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yeah.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo, James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Okay. Resolution number 2023-09-02, resolution authorizing the payment of monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns?
I have one question. Do we, do we have, I asked for the running total, is that more on?
Yes.
The running total of the money spent at the conferences? Do we have that? I don't see an update on that.
I know we got you the legal bill one, but that wasn't on my radar for some reason. I'm sorry if... Emma, did you catch that? I'm sorry if I didn't. I can certainly do that.
No, I apologize. I don't have that running total, but I could give that to you. So you just want the, so I had provided it for the last conference, but I don't have the cumulative.
Yeah, all the, all the money spent on all the conferences by staff, commissioners, whoever attends from the Housing Authority, meals, travel, just want to get a running total of that.
Okay, and that's year-to-date for 2023?
Yeah. Correct.
I could put that together, but I apologize.
So the specific question for this one is, are we, do the conferences, are the conferences different topics?
Yes.
Sure. Yeah.
So like, what's the last one you guys went to, AC, right?
The last one I think we went to was in Denver, right?
So it was AC, then Denver?
Yeah.
And then now this one?
Different organizations.
So each one is a different...
They may have different speakers, different conferences, different things that they're updating us on.
Are we okay with the, like, I thought there was, Commissioner can only attend one or two, maybe you put that in?
Correct, it was one or two, but if we don't have any commissioners that want to go or can make it, because I know some have other responsibilities, it was two commissioners that can go. If there's no commissioner, any other commissioner, I don't have a problem with someone that has gone to go again.
Okay, so a commissioner essentially could attend all?
They can, but if, if a commissioner who has not gone on any wants to go, they will take precedence over that, over that commissioner who has been to other...
Yeah, I mean, I hear, I understand that. I think it's a little overkill to send a commissioner to more than one. Like, I think, I see your point of how useful it is to talk to people, but once you go to one, I would assume like you're getting enough knowledge and experience. I mean, it's like...
I can agree with that because every, every conference has different topics. So one may be specific to redevelopment, one may be specific to maybe our funding or, so it depends on what that particular conference's topic is. So just because you go to one doesn't mean that you're going to gain the same education as the second one. You may gain something that you didn't gain on the first one.
I know.
And it doesn't mean you become an expert on things just going to one.
It's only two, it's only two per year unless, and I think everybody should go. I think you should go, you should definitely come.
Yeah, my whole thing is, is like the priors, prioritizing like funds, right? And like, we see tonight that we have tons of issues and problems, and we need resources, and I'm interested to see at the end like how much this is all going to be. And like, could we have taken some of, or all that money and repainted all the walls in the building?
I would again like to suggest the reason we are in this problem is because the board and staff has not been trained traditionally, and that good management says, know your business, know your business. And this business changes more than most businesses.
I get it.
With the new fair housing laws coming out, with the new Inspire coming out.
You guys are going.
I mean, that stuff comes, that stuff comes in like crazy.
I know you're going, you know, you're going and your staff is going.
You guys need to know it too.
Yeah, but, you know.
To be good policymakers.
We're, again, we're overselling. So like, you're, you're in the detail, you're in the weeds, right? Your hand, you've got to know your stuff, and you do. But like, it's good for your managers to go and your training, and I totally agree with that. I start to get a little worried that, you know, we're spending money that we shouldn't be on commissioners going, airfare, hotels, food, where, you know, I don't know if the, we're not in the weeds, right? We don't need to be spending the money, and maybe that money could be allocated elsewhere. That's my opinion, it's on the record, and that's all.
Thank you. Can we call the vote? One more question, one more question? Sure, sure. Right after.
No, no, no.
You want to finish first?
No, no, no.
You want to finish and then we'll let you?
Sure, my one thing is the security. I just want to make sure that I think the security's on here. Those funds that we're paying is minus when they didn't show up. And that's...
Every week they give us the hours and they fluctuate.
And we confirm that, and, okay. That's it, thanks.
How's it going, Emma?
Yes, it's minus the times that they were late.
I asked how you're doing. It's already been answered, so go on.
That's been answered, Emma. Actually, Commissioner Sanford has a question for you.
How you been? I haven't seen you since the last meeting. You weren't at the last meeting.
Yeah, I apologize, I had a previously scheduled family vacation.
You don't have to apologize for that. Question, did you get my email from earlier today?
Yes, I did, and I did forward that on to Mr. Ecto.
Okay. Why didn't you reply to me?
I've been advised by Mr. Ecto that it should be involved in all correspondence.
Thank you.
When was that advisement?
Emma, if you guys can give me a minute, this has nothing to do with the list of bills currently, so I would prefer that you not answer these questions. We have gone over this, and I want to move on. If it doesn't pertain to the list of bills, please hold it off till later on, open discussion. We are currently focusing on the monthly list of bills.
Yes, I'm about to ask a question of the board.
But that's not the question you just asked.
We're having a conversation.
No, this is, this is a public forum, it's not for you guys to have a conversation. If it doesn't pertain to, if it doesn't pertain to the bills, I ask that you keep those questions further later on, for later on.
Emma, I wanted to ask, I wanted to meet with you to talk about the capital fund. Item number three on, I think, second page, list of bills, William J. Guarini, $33,300. Was that subject to a procurement process?
May I respond to this?
Yes.
Yes, this has to do with the bills, yes.
Yes, it was subject to an open bidding process. We went out to bid for four boiler replacements at Inter Jackson Gardens. The total contract award was $508,000, and this is the first progress paid.
When was this awarded?
This contract was awarded, I believe, in January or February. Work did not commence due to a long lead time on the boilers. I can tell you the exact board resolution. Just a minute. Yeah, so the resolution number 2023-01.05, January 30.
That's 2023.01.05?
That is correct.
Okay. Can you do me a favor and get me the procurement spreadsheets for that resolution?
Procurement spreadsheets, do you believe that...
The evaluation sheets for that vendor.
So it was a sealed bid, so there are no evaluations?
It was a sealed bid.
Yes.
And no evaluation?
We don't do evaluations unless there is an RFP or an RFQ process.
Okay. So if I wanted to get more information on that, who handles the sealed bids?
So we, as the authority, handle the bids. The bid documents were produced by our architect engineer and...
And who was that?
This is it was... So that was Clark Caten Hints.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I replied.
Clark Caten, C-A-T-O-N, Hints, H-I-N-T-S.
And was counsel privy to that award?
Yes.
Okay.
They were.
Then I will follow with counsel.
A legal opinion from them on that.
So there is a legal opinion, okay, good. All right, thank you, Emma.
Thank you, Emma. Any further questions, concerns? Can we call the vote, please?
Anthony Forbes.
Miss?
Yes.
Andrew Impastato.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo, James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution number 2023-09-03, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to extend the contract for maintenance and servicing of boilers and associated mechanical equipment.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns? Director?
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Andrew Impastato.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo, James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution number 2023-09-04, resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to extend the contract for the trash chute maintenance services.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns? Call the vote, Director.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Andrew Impastato.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo, James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution number 2023-09-05, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to award a contract for sprinkler head replacement.
Motion.
Second, sorry. Questions, concerns? I'm sorry, it's been a long night. Director, call the vote.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Andrew Impastato.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo. James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution number 2023-09-06, resolution by the Commissioners of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken approving an amended budget for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2024. Questions, oh, sorry. Second. Questions, concern? I think, is this why Mr....
Bill, you want to say a thing or two, Bill or Emma sits there, you guys are waiting, so please.
Sure, so what this is, is to amend the budget to include the change in the salaries that are being charged to Fox Hill, the $38,500. So per the state's requirements, the appropriations, as originally stated, was $1,947,238. Now, the number is $1,985,738. Total appropriations have increased by that amount also. This is consistent with the original introduced budget that the board approved that the state in New Jersey has now signed off on for you to adopt.
So we've got all the approvals from the state we need, and this will be the final approval for our budget for 2024?
So this is an amendment resolution which the state does not act on to an introduced budget that had been submitted to the state. We've responded, Emma and I, to their inquiries, and they now have signed off for you to adopt, which would be the next resolution.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, concerns by the Commissioners? Director, call the vote.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Andrew Impastato.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo, James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution number 2023-09-07, resolution adopting the annual and capital budget program for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns?
So this resolution is the actual adoption resolution after we've received approval from the state of New Jersey, which incorporates the amounts that were just considered on the amendment resolution.
And this sets us up as a final for the rest of the year.
Director, call the vote.
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Andrew Impastato.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo, James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Resolution number 2023-09-08, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to amend the Fox Hill Gardens management agreement with Housing for Hoboken Inc.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns?
Who can shed some light on this resolution?
Want to jump in again, Bill or Emma? Let Bill do the spirit.
I kind of would like to. This resolution is just to amend the management agreement with Fox Hill Gardens for Fox Hill, oh, sorry, with Housing for Hoboken for Fox Hill to reflect the contract for the executive director, which was adopted at the last meeting. Those are the only changes to the management agreement, just to make it consistent with what was already adopted by the board last month.
So what if any practical effects does that have by adopting this resolution?
Beyond reflecting the contract with the executive director, which was previously approved, it has no practical effect.
It has no...
No practical effect.
And why is it just Fox Hill's, or would we have to do this for all of our properties?
Fox Hill is the only property that's been converted to RAD, which is under the management agreement with Housing for Hoboken. So at this time, this process only applies to Fox Hill.
Got it, so if we, if or when we converted other properties to RAD, we would have to pass a similar resolution?
There, well, there would be a management agreement with so many at that point for all of the properties, each of the properties that will be determined further down the road. There was a Fox Hill Gardens management agreement, which was agreed to at the time of closing on Fox Hill. So that's standard process with a RAD conversion.
What standard process?
With a RAD conversion, sorry.
I'm sorry, just...
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, can we call the vote?
Anthony Forbes.
Yes.
Andrew Impastato.
No.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo. James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution number 2023-09-09, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to adopt a new authority procurement policy.
Motion.
Second. Questions, concerns?
Yes, I have questions for counsel. Page four, section nine, Ethics, Ethics in Public Contracting and Public Trust. Are you with me, counsel?
Yes.
To whom does this section apply?
Board members, officers, and employees of the housing authority. Well, and agents as well.
And agents, correct. Would the members of the Special Procurement Redevelopment Committee constitute... Would the members of the Special Procurement Redevelopment Committee constitute agents or employees of the housing authority?
No.
So my understanding is that there are members of that committee who are then not covered by this policy.
Good question.
Is that correct?
I could be correct, yes.
So how do we resolve or address that problem?
I'm not sure the problem you're referring to.
There are members of a Special Procurement Committee, correct?
Correct.
How many members?
Uh, director, can you?
Yeah, how many members were there? Can I be reminded? I'm sorry, I didn't come up with that. Can I be reminded? Ten?
Seven.
Oh, seven.
Seven.
Sorry, seven.
Of those seven members, how many are employees of the housing authority?
I think we had four or five.
Four.
Four.
Four. And of the members of that committee, how many are members of the board?
One.
All right, so that gets five, is that six out of seven? Is that correct?
There are three employees.
Three employees, okay. So three plus one, that's four members, that's the majority of that committee that's covered by this policy. Who are the other three members? Are they employees? Are they agents? Are they members of a board?
City community here?
Members of the community. One is a, one is a city representative?
Okay.
And then there's two at large from the community.
So counsel, would the city representative be covered by this policy?
Yes, public officials in the city of Hoboken, who exercise any functions or responsibilities with respect to the project, would be covered?
Got it. So the two members of the community that were appointed by the director, are they covered by this policy?
One was a housing resident.
Sorry, Commissioner?
I think one is, I think one was a, was a housing resident. Would they be covered? Would they be covered because they're a housing resident part of the RAD board?
I don't know. I can't answer that.
So it's only, it's only related to city?
It's only one person.
It's only one from the city, but they probably have their own.
No, no, not the city, the community.
So to the extent, I think I may be able to, I may be jumping ahead of step here on your question, but to the extent that any of these individuals are directly or indirectly involved in the selection, in the, sorry, in the selection or in the award or administration of any contract, this policy would apply to them. So if that were to be the case, then yes. I think the potential award of contract you're referring to would still be done by this housing authority board, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct. Any, any award of contract is done by the board.
So that, so that committee is not making an award. However, to the extent that you would argue that they directly or indirectly impacted the selection, this policy would then apply to them. My understanding from previous meetings, previous information that I was able to obtain, is that the Special Procurement Committee will be voting upon, or will be evaluating RFQs, RFPs related to a vendor that this board will select that is approximately $800 million in value. So they're going to be very involved in shaping any of those particular eight person, bidders that we've received bids from. So I would like that clarified, how these two, how these two people are covered under the policy.
So correct me if I'm wrong, director, that procurement committee will be making a recommendation to this board?
Correct.
And this board will be taking the action?
Correct.
And to the extent that that recommendation is directly or indirectly involved in the selection, yes, this would apply to the members of that committee.
Okay. So I, I have your certainty.
I apologize if I.
No apology needed to your first one. Clarification.
To your point, James, Commissioner Sanford, why can't we just identify all the members of that committee as agents?
You could if you chose to do that. Would we want to designate them as such?
Would we need to change this?
No, you would not actually change, because this procurement policy is going to apply to everything that housing authority does in terms of procurement. If you wanted to do that separately, naming specific individuals or whatever, you could do that by separate action of the board, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I think that would cover what you're saying.
So I would like to make a motion that the two community representatives are included as agents under this policy, or if you would help to refine that into a better resolution.
You can make a motion to stipulate that as far as this board is concerned, any member of the Special Procurement Committee, and I think that what you'd probably want to do is say any member of the committee, rather than specify two individuals, because as this process goes along, those individuals could change more than once.
Tell if I'm right or wrong, though, I think the cleanest way to do it is vote on this, and then do our new business maybe suggested, right?
Correct, Commissioner. That would be, my recommendation is that that's separate from this procurement policy, because this is going to apply to everything across the board, and I don't think that that specific change to this policy is necessary.
So can you just remind everybody that we have to have that moment of new business?
Sure, there has not been a second, so it's not technically on the floor at the time of new business.
I know, I, new business, you can, you can.
Right, you're free to make that motion again, again if there's a second or a fourth.
Okay. So the next area, the next page, page five. Conflicts of interest. Can you help me and the public to understand what is the purpose of this provision? Counsel?
Sure, just give me one second while I make a little question, I apologize. Can you point me to 9.1 conflicts of interest?
Yes, 9.1 conflicts of interest, page five.
This is fairly standard conflict of interest provision, dealing with anybody who may have an interest or tangible personal benefit in any contract of the authority.
Okay. So who at the authority is tasked with determining whether any person that this policy applies to has a potential conflict of interest?
The director is the contracting officer.
I'm sorry, the director and the contracting officer?
I'm sorry, the director is the contracting officer in this situation.
So Director Eko would have this responsibility?
Correct.
Okay. Counsel, how can Director Eko perform this part of the policy, this part of his duty to determine if conflicts do or do not exist? What, how would one go about doing that?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So there's a provision in here about conflicts of interest. So how would we know if a conflict of interest existed or didn't exist?
So wouldn't that be something in?
I think that would be examined on a case-by-case basis. If there were evidence that a conflict existed, then contracting officer would.
Investigate.
Investigate.
Yeah, correct. So approximately three or four meetings ago, sometime in May or June, it was a long summer, I had brought up to counsel, to your father, about whether we were doing enough due diligence when, on the selection of the committee members for the Special Procurement Committee. Are you familiar with that?
I recall that, yes.
Okay. Part of that discussion was my raising of federal campaign contributions and New Jersey State campaign contributions, and whether or not this housing authority was reviewing that data. Do you recall that part of the conversation?
I don't recall that specific part of the conversation.
So just, just so we're all trying to remember something that happened a few months ago, if both of us remember it exactly, that's okay, we got the record. So from the record, I believe your father, counsel, responded that that was not something within the scope of the authority to be doing at that time, and that at the time that we had a policy, that was not specifically incorporated as a measure of review for the policy. That's what I remember that conversation, how that conversation ended.
I don't recall that conversation. I mean, I do know that the existing policy of the authority does have conflict of interest provision in it.
Okay. See, my, where we ended that conversation was counsel advising or reminding that at the time of creating the Special Procurement Committee and the current policy of the Procurement Committee at that time, there was no provision for reviewing federal campaign contributions and New Jersey State campaign contributions. So the reason why I'm bringing it up now is that there is a resolution now to have a new procurement policy, it would seem like this would be an appropriate time to remedy that previous oversight, for lack of a better word.
Just like.
I'm totally confused. This, this conflict of interest, when one of the persons making the choice has a financial or another type of interest or tangible personal benefit in or from the firm competing for the award. So if somebody puts in a bid and your brother owns the company, that's a problem. That's a problem, right?
I agree.
But making a financial contribution to the governor's race, where's that? I mean, I've never run into that in my career, that making a contribution to a politician was a reason that it was a conflict of interest in awarding a contract. That I've never run into. I think this addresses that I can't give a contract to my cousin, and I shouldn't be. That's clear, and that, that's here.
Well, unfortunately, director, that is something that I have run into many times in New Jersey State politics, where particular vendors receive preferential treatment in exchange for campaign contributions. That's generally.
And that's covered by, and that's covered by state ethics laws that would address if there is an actual, if actual evidence of a benefit as a result of that contribution. I mean, if there's any change you would like to make to this policy, any other, Commissioner, I'm sure you can raise that, you can make a motion to amend it, if you have a specific issue.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion that the contracting officer, which would be the director, that the contractor, contracting officer is responsible for reviewing federal campaign contributions and New Jersey State contributions as it relates to members of the Special Procurement Committee. Anybody second that motion?
No second.
Well, I.
Are you seconding?
No, I'm thinking about it, I'm just trying, can you give, can you give me like an example? Is it possible to give me like a, walk me through a potential conflict?
Okay.
I don't know if that's possible.
Sure. A general example is that employee one gives cash to politician one, and employee one benefits from an official action of politician one.
On this election.
On this selection committee.
Yeah, for this.
Right?
Oh, I was going to say a general example of how a political campaign contribution could become a corrupting influence.
So a contractor that we potentially could be voting on gives a polit, gives a, gives a polit, gives a donation?
To a political person.
To a person on that select committee. Right? Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with that. I second it, okay.
There's no conflict, there's no zone that's committed.
Well, I think potentially if there was somebody on that committee.
But I'm confused now, because it makes no, just like the director said, what does one have to do with the other? If they're not related, as he stated, or his example was they're not related, we can't tell somebody who they can make a donation to.
We're not telling.
So now what we're saying is, well, we found that you donated to such and such, and as a recourse, or because of that action, we cannot give you that.
I see his point, because there is, there is a political person on our board. So essentially, someone can make a donation to that person.
But he's making, the director's the one making.
I didn't say the director.
No, he didn't say that. His philosophy, I think, is that if ABC developers gave one of you board members
Right.
$1,000, and then you vote for ABC Development.
Yeah, I totally agree with that.
But isn't that covered already? Aren't you covered for that? That's a no-no, that's like Ethics 101.
Right, that's covered by state ethics laws with respect to campaign contributions, if there is evidence that that donation influenced.
I mean.
But then, but then, hold on, okay. So then, we're going to get specific, because when the donation was made from.
Whoa, 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 I am not referring to any specific.
I know, I, I'm about to.
All right.
Because we talked about it, we've talked about it in public, and you, you and your father made a, a report on it. So.
That nothing wrong with it.
Yeah, that there was nothing wrong.
Well, wait a second, wait a second. I, I don't want you guys to accidentally do what I did, I mean, that was in, that was a.
No, no, that was public.
That was not public.
Yeah, we, we talked about it.
We did, we had a discussion.
Yeah, we talked about it.
The report is not public. Correct, counsel?
There was no wrongdoing.
No, just the, the fact that we talked about, the report was.
That report confidential or not, because I remember very clearly receiving an email from your father saying the report is confidential.
No, but you, we talked about that.
Here, in the board.
You did a report.
I'm just saying, the report itself is confidential.
Yeah, correct. You talked about at the meeting what your results were. That's what we talked about.
Yes, your father actually did a whole.
He did a whole thing at the.
Right, the facts, the facts are public and the facts are public.
Okay.
Well, I, I.
That was not the conclusion of the report, that nothing was wrong.
Well, we can't talk about that, but.
But I thought that was clearly the conclusion, that there was no.
Yeah, there was nothing wrong.
And I think, I think I take objection to you clearly making this case that clearly refers to.
Not at all.
With, with, with your, with your little sham, if we, somebody gave somebody nonsense. You know better than that.
Okay, are we, can we move forward? Are you seconding the motion?
Are we seconding the motion?
I would second the motion.
Okay, second the motion. Questions, concerns? Can we call a vote, please?
Anthony Forbes?
This is a vote on, pardon me. This is a vote on the motion on the floor to amend the draft procurement policy. Just to be clear, this isn't on adoption of the policy itself.
Right. This is separate.
You, you, by the way, you can't tell someone what to vote.
No, he said.
That is correct.
She just told.
Mike Seitzman just told.
No.
Just told her vote, no.
He said, no, he said it to me.
He had, because.
Well, it's got to go on the record.
He, yeah, he said it to me.
That's how it sounded, it sounded like you were telling.
No, he said it to me.
That's what I heard, and you have to put that on the record.
You can put it on the record.
Commissioner Seitzman?
Andrew Impostato and I don't agree on much.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Aaron, can you ask your wishes?
Well, is that, I mean, that corporation counsel, that needs to go on the record, that Commissioner Seitzman told Commissioner Aaron Lewitt, vote no.
I did not.
Is that, is that what you heard?
I didn't, I didn't hear.
I didn't hear, what I heard was that Red Forbes said yes. I think, my, my thought was that Aaron asked her what did he vote. That's what I thought. But again, if you guys heard different, that's up to you guys. And if you want that to reflect on the record, please have a.
So if we may, there is a motion that was seconded to have, if you want to rephrase the motion, counsel, so we all know what we're voting on.
So the motion before you is to amend the procurement policy, the draft procurement policy, to include a requirement in 9.1 conflicts of interest, that the contracting officer, help me out, please, Commissioner, review.
Review federal contributions and New Jersey State contributions.
Campaign contributions.
Campaign contributions.
To any officer, employee, board member, or agent.
Yes.
Participating directly or indirectly in the selection, award, or administration of any contract.
Yes.
So the motion before you is to amend the draft policy to that effect.
Thank you, counsel.
So I, I have a question then, before, if we do this, right, does that mean that if we find something, that we just, that that, that specific contract cannot be given, or do we just ask the agent to recuse themselves and not vote?
Under what's proposed, it would just be that the contracting officer would review it.
That they would review it?
Would, would review whether a contribution was made.
Yeah, I, I don't see why, that, that's like just adding another protocol in place to make sure that everything is clean. I mean, we're not, shouldn't be like a disagreement with that, but...
And then what action is taken is a whole other question.
Exactly, so we're, we're putting...
Then you go to the attorney and say, look, this is what happened.
Yeah, then he could do a report, just like we did last time.
Right, as, as the motion was made before you, it would not dictate what the evaluation is or what the recourse would be. It would just be a requirement that the contracting officer review it for campaign contributions by those individuals.
Director, please call a vote, if I may.
Are you ready, Chairman?
Thank you.
Anthony Forbes?
Yes.
Andrew Pistano?
Yes.
Aaron Lewit?
No.
Barbara Rass?
Yes.
Michael Russo? James Sanford?
Yes.
Erica Saitzman?
Yes.
So, it passes?
Yes.
It passes. And that's the amendment.
The amendment.
Correct. The amendment.
So, we can't, we, we now have to vote on...
So, you would, uh, well, why don't we see if there are any other...
That's the first, that's the first amendment, I have a few more questions to answer. Section 10, Procurement Authority and Administration. Delegation of authority, all procurement transactions shall be administered by the Executive Director, known as the contracting officer. Counsel, is that standard?
If you'll give me a minute, please, Commissioner, still making the notes to make sure I have the measure reflected correctly. Alright, can you repeat that?
So, section 10, Procurement Authority and Administration, page five. Delegation of authority, all procurement transactions shall be administered by the Executive Director, known as the contracting officer. Is that standard?
Yes.
Are there any other persons or positions that could be or fulfill the contracting officer, since it's the Board that can delegate this responsibility?
In theory, sure. It is standard procedure in the case of Housing Authority is that the Executive Director is the Secretary and Contracting Officer.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to amend the section to reflect that the contracting officer, instead of the Executive Director, it should be administered by the CFO.
I do think your father might have some problems with that. We discussed this at length with Farrell when we went through this subject, and I think he was very clear that the Executive Director had to be the contracting officer.
I mean, that is how it's designated. You could entertain it, but this is very much standard procedure, and I will point out in general with this policy, this policy was developed, first of all, this Housing Authority hasn't had a new procurement policy in over 30 years, or over 20 years, excuse me, sorry, over 20 years, and it is very much time that the procurement policy be brought into the 21st century. This is very much sanctioned by HUD, and a lot of the work on this was done certainly by Housing Authority staff, by counsel, all kinds of individuals, but this was led by the enterprise partners, and in particular, the person who HUD considers the foremost expert on ACOPS, admin plans, procurement policies. So, this is very well thought out, and the idea of the, it's pretty much unheard of that anyone other than the Executive Director would be the contracting officer.
And I think taking that responsibility away from me is detrimental to my managing this Housing Authority.
Understood.
Just clearly.
So, there's a motion, is there?
So, that is my motion.
I, I just would, I just want one comment, I do have a problem, if you, you, I don't think the Executive Director should be suggesting what our Corporation Counsel is discussing and talking about. So, like, I have a problem with Director Eko going, I don't think your father would have liked that. If you have a problem with it...
I think I'm part of this discussion.
As Corporation Counsel, then you should address it or not address it.
I'm not giving my response based on anything that the Director said, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner.
No, no.
And he wasn't there at every meeting we had over the course of this.
That's correct.
Either he was or his father was, and we discussed this at length about who should be contracting officers, who can be and who can't be.
I, I know, I, I agree with, that you should be the contract, all I'm saying is procedural, you, you shouldn't be making any comments to the Corporation Counsel on what they're approving or not approving.
I disagree with that.
It's not approved or approved, though. My role is only to give advice, and to the extent that there was a discussion that I wasn't privy to, I think that's totally appropriate, that doesn't change my advice to the Board.
Understood.
Thank you, so can we move forward? Is there a motion? Is there a second on the floor?
No, no, did you?
I made the motion, but there is no second yet. Anybody?
Okay, so it doesn't pass.
Okay, so, moving on. Page six, top of the page, the Executive Director shall ensure that procurement requirements are subjected to an annual planning review to assure efficient and economical purchasing by the HHA. Has such a meeting occurred, or will that be, will that occur because of this policy?
Yeah, once you pass the policy, this will be part of my requirements.
Okay. And... Let's see. Toward the bottom of the page, just above section 11, the Authority operates subject to the Authority of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and as such, where both state and federal law encompasses the same procurement or public contract, a stricter or more limiting procedure which encourages competition shall be used in all cases, as is required by both state and federal law. Counsel, do you know which is stricter, state or federal law?
It is dependent upon what aspect of the procedure you're talking about. For example, there are different prevailing wages and Davis Bacon wages.
I'm sorry, is what?
Uh, different wage, prevailing wages and Davis Bacon wages, depending upon whether you're talking, which one you're talking about, there can be a stricter, a higher wage that has to be paid, and this would include the fact that if there is a conflict between the two, whatever is the more strict, the higher wage in effect would be required, and similar to any other aspect. It really is dependent on the specific issue you're discussing. In some areas, New Jersey procurement is much more strict, in some areas, federal procurement is, HUD regulations are much more strict.
I have no changes to this section at this time, but I may follow with counsel with additional questions. So, I'll just give a pause. Okay, counsel, section 13, Funding Availability. Before awarding any contract...
I'm sorry, did you say before awarding?
Before awarding. Before awarding any contract, the Authority shall ensure that there are sufficient funds available to cover the anticipated cost of contract modification. All contracts awarded through competitive contracting shall be subject to the rules concerning certification of availability of funds adopted pursuant to NJSA 40A 11-3 and NJSA 40A-11-15. For this particular section, as it relates to the Special Procurement Committee, my, again, my understanding is that this redevelopment at this time alone is estimated at around $800 million. Is there sufficient funds available or earmarked for this upcoming project?
No, because there's no financing in place.
There's no financing.
It would be at the time of any award of a contract, would be sufficient funds for that contract. For example, if you were talking about awarding a contract to...